Yep.
Okay. Okay, I called the meeting to order at seven P M. Can we stand for a bunch of allegiance?
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, I wanted to start with, um, Mike is going to keep filling in, in, uh, until a time that, uh, after the master plan has been approved and then he's gonna step, step by, so. Uh, so he's, Mike's gonna be here.
Thank you.
So, yeah, and he's talked with, go ahead, Nick, if you would tell him.
Uh, well, uh, so that, uh, I haven't really been reappointed. I'm just filling in, so that puts Al in the, in the chair position where I was. Uh, last little bit, uh, so that, that's why we're doing what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So just thought I'd try to let everybody know. Uh, let me see, set and adjust minutes and, or excuse me, the agenda. I mean, it looks, I think we just stay on, if we stay on track, we shouldn't. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you know, I want right by that and just right from me, uh, roll call.
Okay. Mike Jacobson, here. Keith DeYoung, here. Carol Robel, there. Al Keaton.
Here.
Denise Belton.
Here.
Irene.
Reen's name on here. Reen.
Here.
And Randy Milner. Okay. And are you serving as chair now?
Yes, and Carl, I have to, did you, did you mention?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. Yes.
Mr. Jacobson's term has expired. He's.
Yes, yes, Linda's checked and it's, it's okay, yeah.
And then K. Hall.
Right to me.
Okay, sure. Okay, send in a, y'all second.
Yes.
Okay, set an adjust agenda.
There is a new password for the wifi and I don't have it and I didn't, I don't have a printout.
Okay. Okay, uh.
Give her just a second.
Yeah. See what it is.
I'm gonna try to put it in again.
Because I'll take a quick look at that.
Same.
You trying to get to the wifi?
I'm on my own wifi. I, I'm just trying to get onto Zoom. So is two other people that are at home, we can't, so they can't get the Dallas password.
All right. Let's see what I can do here for you.
I got two one five six seven two.
Look at this real quick.
For the passcode?
Yeah.
No?
The agenda says two one five six seven two.
For, uh, January eight.
Yeah, that's what I. Copy.
Good. It's not right. I just sent you the one it is and, uh, email, see if, uh.
Email or?
Email.
Or with email you just sent it to.
Um. One I have here, which is. Your Gmail, but, so, um, Heidi, your trustee.
Did this work for you, this password?
Yeah. You having trouble?
Is it caps?
Yes. First letter, the caps.
It's the guess, wait, whether guess?
No.
What's the new one?
Yeah, see, you're in there, Heidi. So he must've just got the wrong, uh, passcode, yeah.
Just love you, just love to know when you're ready.
Yes, I'm ready. Anybody that needs the passcode, I can email them if they sent me the email.
Agent, uh. Uh, declaration of conflict of interest pertinent to the agenda. We, nobody said, we said it out that they wanted to make any, any changes and there's no comment. I'll make a motion. Never done that before.
I don't think we did last time. Yeah. I make a motion, approve it as presented.
I second.
Declaration of conflict of, go ahead.
Does this have to be a roll call or? Just all in favor?
Declaration of conflict of interest pertinent to the.
You gotta call, gotta call a vote.
You gotta call a vote to prove.
It just has to be for all in favor.
All in favor?
Aight.
Good.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Are we ready?
I think so.
Declaration of conflict of interest pertinent to the agenda. Any?
None.
None?
Anywhere.
Okay, public comment. Any person shall be permitted to address, address, uh, a meeting of the P C. Public comments shall be carried out in accordance with the following rules and procedures. Comments shall be directed to the P C with questions directed to the chair. Any person wishing to address the P C, P C shall speak from the lectern or the raised hand feature on Zoom and state his or, it is his or her name and address. Person, persons may be addressed to P C on matters that are relevant to the township landing commission, planning zoning, planning and zoning issues. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding the time needed to answer the P C members' questions. Public comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. Be advised that these rules are applicable to the public comment at the end of the meeting as well.
Is that the agenda?
Um.
Get an agenda. I didn't get an agenda.
There was one on, there's one on, uh, on, um, this one here was downloaded and then there's. Yeah, there's one on, there's one on.
Yeah, I didn't get.
There's, yeah, there's one on.
It's not on my computer.
It was, it was on the website, cause I printed, that's where I printed mine off from.
I looked up, I didn't, I must've missed it, cause I looked on the website.
Okay, okay, sure.
I would have printed it.
Now, Carol?
Yeah.
Uh, there was a, um, and an add-on and I print, I booked you a copy of that, too. You should have, uh, um, a supplemental for that, uh, for later. Okay, public comment in-house. Is there any public comment?
I'm, uh, Mike Fowler. Uh, my address is one one four nine zero Rickord Fork. Uh, my wife and I own Williamsburg Animal Hospital, just a few seconds over there. Um, so basically what I'm here for today, uh, is, so we bought some Brothers Old Feed Store, obviously, several years ago, renovated the front portion into the veterinary clinic that is operational currently. Um, we had the back garage space that was previously used as our dry feed forklifts, uh, you know, just the stuff that was back there. Um, we were looking for a use for that space. Um, as I was looking for a use for that space, um, I was consulting with Bob, our previous zoning person, and I, you know, ran some ideas by him, one of which was, um, can I use it for small event space? It's about fifteen hundred square foot, can fit thirty, forty people. Um, and we renovated essentially into, uh, just a small space that we use personally for our family and for staff meetings, um, when we have drug reps come in to give presentations, things like that. We renovated it for that use. Um, but I would also like to be able to on occasion rent it out, um, according to our zoning ordinance. Um, uh, event spaces are permitted with a special use permit. When I spoke with that Bob about this, um, he informed me that I could wait, since we have a special use permit currently for the veterinary clinic, that we could amend the existing special use permit to fit that. Um, so I went forward with renovations. They are now completed. Um, I have a site plan currently that we just had done, um, by our engineer. Um, but basically what we are trying to figure out at this point, cause as I've been discussing with Dev, we're unsure if I need to apply for a new site plan review, new special use permit or all these things, or if we can simply amend the special use permit we currently have to just allow us to rent that space on weekends. Just term, just wondering if anybody has any, uh, I, obviously I would like to make this as easy as possible.
Yeah, I don't, personally, you know, I don't know, you said how many people?
Around thirty, I would say.
Thirty to forty would be the max capacity. There's not. I, I think we'd have to have some time to look at it ourselves to see, you know, what's, what's, what rules are applicable to it.
Um. Oh. Cause we, uh, yeah, we essentially, I mean, it would just be during times the building is unused anyway. Um, on the weekends, we have adequate parking for it. Um, and I mean, we could limit the capacity if that were a concern. It's really not a huge deal. I don't think it's going to be used all that often. It's basically just, we put a fair bit of money into the space and it's a nice enough space that I would like to occasionally be able to rent it out for. Um, we've also had some other veterinarians and things in the area, um, mentioned wanting to use it for, uh, continuing education courses and things like that, and just as a general kind of small group meeting space, which this area currently doesn't have, so. I think it fills a need for the area personally. Um, but yeah, that's, that was my question is what, I guess, what would you guys like me to do? Um, to make.
This one is just public, public comment and to let them know about it.
Gotcha, okay.
They, they can get back to me when I.
I apologize.
He filled out an application. He just hasn't paid a fee and we don't know if he needs to just amend his conditions for that location, or is this considered a mixed use? And when I talked with Randy about it in the last month or so, he thought it might just be a, a matter of amending the conditions. Fire department may need to take a look at the space as well as parking. So, and this was just kind of an intro. He filled out the application, but he hasn't paid a fee or anything yet until we determine, but it's something we can talk about later.
A copy of the site plan, some photos of what the building looks like currently back there, as well as my application printed out here, if you guys would like to have that. So.
Yeah.
It's all gotta come to me and get approved before.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. Okay.
Is there anyone else? In, in the hall, in Zoom? Nobody?
The answer is.
Okay. Okay, public comment is closed. Approve of the December fourth minutes.
I had a, a question about the minutes. On the conditions for the S U P. Um. You know, we did not, in, in the, um, summary, didn't discuss what, about the, what was offered by the applicant and that we agreed with, like the, the two brines.
Mm-hmm.
It wasn't, it, um, I wanted to, to know if we should word it so that it wasn't a mandatory request. Like you do two br- brines or, you know, you, you can't, I don't want it to look that way, cause that would be considered, uh, maybe like a taking question. Um.
Uh, where was that? Where, where we signed that?
The three.
On those, on one through eighteen?
Right, number one.
Number one.
Yeah. So, um, I did have a handout, uh, cause there's some, some of you have already known this, what, what a taking is and types and analysis. I brought some printouts, uh, if you're interested and I can pass them around. Um. But, um, it, you know, I just wanna make sure that we're not making, that, that there, that was something that they offered and we said, okay, basically.
I've, I would think we've already approved these.
Yeah, I think.
We've already, so this is, they've already agreed and we've approved them. So we're told we can't amend them without, I wouldn't think.
No, okay, then never mind.
Would you?
I think so. I think we already approved, right?
Yeah, we've already approved those.
That was my only comment about meetings.
I, I know I wasn't here, uh, for that meeting, but, uh, I see, uh, I see something in the writing here that makes me ask a question and I wanna, uh, go to page four. And about halfway down the page, uh, just above where it says master plan draft review, the sentence above that says, there was board discussion regarding the process through to approval. Does this mean the board board or the P C?
P C.
Okay, so I think that should say P C. And throughout this document, I think that's, the, the P C is referred to as board in more than one place and that needs to be changed to say P C.
The, okay.
Like, and I'm referencing this board, this is at this meeting, but you'd like it to say.
It, you have the planning commission.
Yeah.
Doesn't need to see, it doesn't need to say P C boards, P C, planning commission, that's all I need to say.
Yeah.
This isn't the board. The board is the next meeting.
You guys are the planning commission board, though, right?
No.
No.
Or the planning commission.
Technically the planning commission.
So any occurrence of board should be changed to.
If it's, if it's referencing this group's meeting, that needs to be changed in this.
Do it throughout the document.
Yep.
Good catch.
And that's the only thing I see. And like I say, I wasn't here, so I don't really know.
Thank you, I wasn't aware of.
Worries.
Let's see where it get confusing, where you say board.
I've, I've, you know, because I wasn't here, I'm reading, I'm like, the board, but. Was it board? So. No, that's all right. It's all in a curve.
It took me a year to figure out the difference between. Yeah. Is there, does anybody have anything else?
Hey, I'll make the motion that we accept the, the minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
Do we need a roll call? I think we do.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Uh, roll call.
Do we need a roll call for that?
Yeah.
No? Just, uh, all in favor? Okay, just an all in favor.
All in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Go ahead.
Mike, Mike Jacobson. We don't have our need.
Yeah, saying names.
Okay.
Instead of I. So I'm, well, voices yet or on the tape, but I won't, and I'm turning away and there's a noise here for the best.
Mike, uh, Mike made the motion and Keith seconded. Keith Young. No. All agreed. Okay, motion to approve. Probably, we all sat, public hearing none. Yes, speakers, none. Reports, uh, zoning administrator.
I printed two full packets of the P C meeting tonight and I've, um, given them both away, so if you have any questions about what I did in December, just, just ask. I did prepare my annual report. I've submitted it to Linda Loopsima with the board and I've sent a copy to Al, so, um, we did eighty-five permits during twenty twenty-four. I think Bob had done maybe ten or eleven when I started in April, so it was a busy year for me. Um, three Z B A appeals. I think there were four, um, site plan reviews and, um, special uses. Um, and the reason I asked the gentleman to come in tonight is cause he gave me the application, but he wasn't sure. Um, personally, I don't normally get involved with doing zoning on, unless you're expanding a, a project, if it's going up or it's going out and it's gonna impede on encroachments or whatever. Um, Bob actually wrote a permit for him to invest quite a sizable amount of money on the, on his space and inside. I think seventy or eighty thousand dollars to fix this meeting room up. I don't know if you wanna visit it, but I don't know if we can talk about this at the end of the meeting, if this would be more of a conditions, special use conditions. Both events wouldn't be going on, I don't believe, at the same time. If the clinic's open, this would be more of a weekend based on what he told me and in the evenings. Baby showers, bridal shower type things, so.
One question I would have is, if it's a veterinary clinic and I have veterinarian classes and stuff, it's not really a different.
They even need.
That even need.
He's not looking for it to be, he wants it to be called back door seventy-two or the back room seventy-two. So he actually wants to advertise it as an event space for baby showers, bridal showers. It may be used as an event space for training classes for vets, but it will also be looked at as over and above, like Sunday afternoon, after church, cake and ice cream for a eightieth birthday party or something. He just wants to utilize a space as much as he possibly can. When I ran this by our former supervisor, he felt it was a mixed use, not allowed in the township. So I have a different, I've gotten different opinions since, so I'm leaving it with the planning commissioners and that's why I asked him to come tonight and kinda just run through what has led up to where he is today, so. Anyway, I didn't, that's kind of all I have. I, it's been, December's been a little bit easier, just a lot of, um, wrapping up. Um, my email address did go to a dot gov email address, so my new email, please take note, is zoning@whitewater township M I dot gov. Now I have three emails to bobble. So I still have my Gmail. I still am using my Gmail. That one's not gonna get transitioned into the other one for a little while, so I can roam that one out, so, but if you have questions, let me know, but it's zoning@whitewater township M I dot gov. It's a month full. Um, there is a Z B A appeal coming up on January twenty-third. I am working on that packet, um, with, uh, the Z B A, so that packet won't be out for a couple of weeks. Hopefully you got your appeal documentation and email. Um, I mailed out, um, skips, everyone else has gotten theirs and, um, we do have three new members on the, uh, on the Z B A as well, so we actually have a full Z B A right now, except for, we're lacking one alternate, but at least we have an alternate. Okay, any questions?
Um, would you mind, I had a printout of, uh, annual report that I put over there on the table. Would you, would you mind grabbing a copy so that you can look if, if it's on the table over there?
Is it for?
The annual report?
What?
Our annual report.
Do I need to do it?
No, no, I thought maybe when I look at it.
So you have it prepared for this year going forward?
There are not enough firefighters.
Cause I, I saw it put in the package.
Separate fires of this magnitude. We're doing the very best we can, but no, we don't have enough fire personnel in Lake County between all of the departments to handle it.
We're gonna feed back.
For our speakers.
Okay. Okay.
And yeah.
From the vice chair.
Whoever's running Zoom, shut that, I can shut that.
Frustration and theory.
You don't know where my mail was when this.
Oh, Heidi's is not muted. Well, somebody, I just muted, somebody says residence.
I'm not adding what I signed up, cause there's too much feedback.
Yeah, well, I just muted them, so that's what it was.
Okay.
If it happens again, remind me that, that's what it is.
Okay, the next name is the vice chair. It wasn't really a report. There was some, I guess the way we, we, we call the meetings and adjourns and, uh, Roberts rules, uh, that we usually follow, Roberts rules say that the chairperson calls a meeting to order. And, uh, and then for adjournment, um, I looked at the Attorney General's, uh, Opens Meetings Act and the chairman adjourns. Now, the only difference there is if a meeting ends abruptly, let's just say the chairman decides he just wants to go home, he's done. Well, if there are three things that have to happen, you have to meet the time, which is ours is nine o'clock. You fulfill your agenda. Um, and then, and then the meeting can adjourn, but if, if it's before that or something interrupts it abruptly, then you, then you need to have a roll call, but other than that, the chairperson, um, calls it to order and adjourns, so. Just wanted to share that. Um. No, I'm just, just stating that.
Oh, how, how, how do you want, how do you want to generally end the meeting? Because this has come up several times.
It hasn't. We've, up until going on four years, we've always, the chair, the chairperson called it to order and adjourned up. But we've, we've never, never not fulfilled our, um, agenda and our time. We're always beyond our time, so. So they've always adjourned it. The chairman's done that. And, um. So.
Up, before, before we just change it.
She, she can't talk, cause she's.
Yeah.
Well, as, as I understand what Al's saying and as I understood what was read here and being here as long as I've been, up until we changed it this last time around, about a year ago, uh, that he's right, the chairperson always, uh, opened the meetings and, and called and closed the meetings or asked for a, asked for a motion to close the meetings. And according to Roberts rules, as he, they're written right here, he's got them in the packet. As long as our time limit has been fulfilled, as long as we've completed our tasks on our agenda, that's okay. But if we stop for some unknown reason or, or, or quit early without having those two, those things met, then we have to vote on, on shutting down the meeting. And, uh, we've only been voting on shutting down the meeting for this last year or so, I assume. So according to Roberts rules, we do not need to do that as long as we meet the requirements, which we, I, I can't think of the time we have.
Yeah.
And then adjournment, when it comes to adjournment, you look to, uh, the Opens Meetings Act of two thousand eight and the Attorney General, the presiding off, the presiding person adjourns it. And if you stop and think about it, four hundred and twenty members of Congress and Mike, Mike Johnson, he calls a meeting to order and he adjourns it. They don't vote on that. So, so I don't, I think it's just unnecessary in my opinion.
Okay, so what do you consider the regular, uh, ti- ending time of the meeting? Is it nine o'clock? Nine o'clock, okay, so we've always most gone past.
I can't think of the time. We didn't make it to that. Maybe, maybe one night in seven years.
Yeah.
The Google Zoom requirements for meetings?
No, no.
I think that's where that might come into play at.
So that might be there, but I, that wouldn't, they wouldn't trump. You know, the Openset Meetings Act, they can, they can say, they can have their opinion, but that certainly wouldn't trump the Openset Meetings Act.
Because we're supposed to be following Roberts rules, we're supposed to operate under the Roberts rules. And this is the rules in the Roberts rules.
Okay, Township Board Rep, Randy, did you have?
I do. So. We're talking a little bit about software and laptops and emails and so forth, and the town board's spent a good amount of time on this issue in the last several months. Four or five meetings in the last couple of months here are trying to get things. Changed and updated. That impacts the Planning Commission in the sense that I think everyone has a laptop or something from the township. Except, I'm not sure. So there's a process going on now to make sure that all the systems are up and running and properly backed up. And properly with virus protection on it, so I don't know, I think many of you have talked with Wendy about that and or Jill about. And by Linda about the software. There's a question about what all software needs to be on the computers, if you. If you're involved in doing a packet, then you likely need Adobe Acrobat Pro, which is a system that lets you put. PDFs together and number them and that sort of thing, so that's sort of a moving target here. Is is everyone? Is everyone set with a laptop? For you, Chris?
Yes.
You're set too. You're okay, you're okay with your laptop?
Yeah.
You have?
Yeah, I. And I don't use it very often, just for our business, so it's, I have a lot of fun with it. I do have a question. For the, ever since I've been here. We have been emailed. A agenda at least a week or so before the meeting. I did not get one this time and I looked yesterday on the township's site under. Planning Commission and I did not find an agenda there. Is this the way it's going to be in the future? It's going to be on the township website and we are not going to be emailed a copy ahead of time?
Oh, I don't, I, that, I, that's where I printed mine off, was off the township's. Website, but no, we've had packets and I'm sure we can do whatever we want, email, I don't email them. You know, but we can.
I've either had a. Packet here, of course, before I had the, I didn't. Never had to look on the township website to find it and I did not see it. I looked at it yesterday and I did not, I don't know if it was there. It sure wasn't under the Planning Commission title.
It's there.
It's there.
On the rights.
Yeah.
I couldn't find it either, Carl.
I'll look at it when I get home, I'm not going to pull my computer out, but I. I was just expecting to have one emailed to me or. Or be notified, they wouldn't be sitting here, but.
I don't think it's been emailed for at least six months.
It was some emailed on the twenty-third of December. But I don't see you listed as one of the recipients.
PC five.
I know.
You did, you're listed here, so.
So the preference is to have them emailed then from.
I. I think so, I mean, I went into the, I went to the, to the township website to print it off as well, but just because it was easier than finding it in the email, but I think that, I think. An email is is a good way of distributing it.
I used to get them as well and it stopped about six months ago, so. Changed.
You know, see, I've always been a packet guy, I mean. Needed in front of me and printed paper, so what we always did before was print it out. You know, like I had seven packets. And if you wanted your packet, come in sometime and pick it up and before the meeting and. Then one of us used to try to swing it by mics and so.
Yeah, we're right, notified our packet would be available if we wanted it. Lois was the one that always contacted us.
So. Okay, we can fix that.
We can work that today.
Yeah, we certainly fix that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll look again when I get home and see how in the world I missed it.
While, while on this topic, I'd just like to make one more comment about the packet. For a while, or probably just up until just now, we were numbering the pages and it really made a big help for everybody. I think that should be continued, I noticed this packet didn't get numbered, and I know we're going through a change, I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
But I think that should be continued, that was a.
Because some of these packets get really thick.
I tried.
And I can recall.
Put a zip in there in our printer here and tried to do it. Ron Pop showed me how to do it. Last summer and I could not get it, put numbers on it, so I just, I just surrendered.
I know the feeling, I, I, I have the vice president, I was a recording secretary in a job and I was responsible for the agendas. And he looked at me, said it's on unnumbered page three. So I have.
Carl, did you have anything from the ZBA?
Yes, we're having.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Just to be clear, though, that the preferred way of doing a packet is with Adobe Acrobat Pro. So that you can attach files, you don't have to print them out, you can just get them, insert them wherever you need to build a packet, so. That's another reason, that is not a cheap program, it's like twenty-five bucks a month these days, it used to be less than that, but anyway. Secondly, it was mentioned earlier about the dot gov website or email and extension address. So the township is moving over to that, that does give the township more security, I know the. In the past, there was efforts to do that, there was issues about consistency of software that the. Microsoft three sixty-five or something, but all that's being taken care of and all done. I think the old email addresses may work for a while because they're being forwarded, but ultimately we're going to be at dot gov. Which is an improvement over just the Gmail accounts and things like that. It's more, much more security.
Well, it applied for, well, we also have a dot gov.
I believe so.
Eventually, okay.
Like the. Easy one five or whatever that should probably.
Wouldn't you think they'll have that ready?
Well, right now, as, as you know, Deb's email's changed, mine's changed. And I think some of the other board members are changed, the, the individual working on it is Noah. Kramer is his name, and he's going through systems now, starting at the board and, and, and working into some of the staff who are using the computers. Most happily and then working towards, towards others that need, need this done.
Yeah, already deck of, I think, just because.
Yours is dot gov?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's an improvement for everyone. Couple other things, the. I think I mentioned last time that there was an RFP done for engineering services to support our. Work with site plans and special use permits. We've had a couple of issues with larger, more complicated developments that involve. Potentially involve engineering review of potentially stormwater driveways and things like, like that. We did the RFP, the township board selected Gordy Fraser to help with that. You might remember those if you've been around for a while, about three or four years ago, the township updated the site plan and special use requirements. And allowed for an escrow account to be created to pay for that engineering review. So it's not a cost to the township necessarily to, to do that, to have that engineering review, but. It was provided for the old zoning update. So that's in place now when we have a larger project, if we have. And there's reason to think that there could be some bigger ones on the horizon that are larger, larger, more complicated things, it was. You know, when we were looking at Silver Birch, there were a few issues in my mind about, you know, the roads and that would have been helpful to have an engineering review of. Secondly. As we've talked before, we need to do an RFP for planning services for the township, since I'm not doing that any longer and. Maybe we can talk about that in more depth under new business, but, but. It'd be a lot longer discussion, but I believe that'll be on the Township Board's agenda here for at least some conversation about. How to go about that, and we'd like some feedback from the Planning Commission about your, your thoughts on how we can.
Oh, I see, I mean, that's, we, you want to talk about it right now? I don't think there's.
In new business, there's an opportunity, I believe.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, sure, sure.
And then finally, the, the town board's meeting next week, it's our regularly scheduled meeting and on that is, is a public hearing in the zoning ordinance clarification work. They decided to hold another public hearing because if you remember last month, we had a, a good sized storm coming through and it may have. Not heard any comments from anyone about, about that work, but. Advertised again for a public hearing for next week. That's it from the Township Board. You.
Can I ask you a question? Would Gordy be able to help us with the? You had mentioned that, is it a road?
Yes.
Ordinance?
Potentially a private road ordinance as well, they work with a lot of townships in Grand Travers County and. We've mentioned briefly to them, but there's been no. Nothing specific about that yet.
But is that something that he would be able to, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of engineering issues in that, in design, road geometry, that. I know Al did some work on that as well, so.
Carl, did you have anything from the CBA?
There will be a, an appeal, I believe in the twenty-third. Individual, they are appealing the rear setback and side setback for. A shed they put up. Without a permit. So, and they. I, I, I think they're. Twenty-two feet into the rear setback and six or eight feet into the side setback and they haven't gotten any permits and. So they're, they're appealing to allow that, so.
Okay, unfinished business, review of the master plan. And the maps and any comments, Randy, how are we, what's the status of the master plan right now?
Okay. So in the packet, I have a memo that describes. Where we are with this, there were, as you remember. The next step in the process was to distribute the master plan to adjacent jurisdictions. That happened, that date ended, I believe, just before Christmas. We did have one comment that came from East Bay Township. And I thought that was included in the packet, but I found where it's not, so you all have a copy on your desk here. It came in on November twenty-first and didn't make the December packet. But the letter basically says, thank you for the opportunity to review and comment on the whitewater township master plan, it's well organized, contains great information. Et cetera, et cetera, at the regular meeting of the East Bay Charter Township Planning Commission, they reviewed it. And their comment is simply that. They acknowledge that much of the district in the south part of our township is very low residential density as well as campgrounds and golf courses. And the desire to maintain that rural character is consistent with what East Bay is trying to do. But also moving forward, they say may, that may be an opportunity to coordinate on existing and future non-motorized and recreational trails across township lines. But East Bay plans to undertake a development of a comprehensive non-motorized plan. So to the suggestion may be that we could work together on something that would connect. With that, so. So in the material that. I sent. Or included in the packet. There is. That comment. Together with. Together with comments from. Together with comments from, from Ron Pop, I have, I have a proposed change for, to address the East Bay. Township's comments. And then I went through the comments from, from Ron Pop and have. A list of eight changes. Corrections. From his comments, as well as a couple of other edits that are just more housekeeping kinds of things. So my point was, as I said in here, that. The Planning Commission is encouraged to offer other edits to this. The next, the next step, just for your information, will be another version of the graphs with edits made to it and then a public hearing.
And when, what would be the process to get that back? Now, was there a time waiting period as well, wasn't there any sixty-three days?
That's it, that has passed.
Okay, yes.
Well, the sixty-three day ended December twenty-third, I believe it was. You remember, we sent this to the Township Board back in September, I think it was. Asked them for three things, one. To approve its distribution, which they did. Secondly, for any comments, and then thirdly, asking them for. Evidence of their decision to be the final approval authority on a master plan or not. Cheryl Goss produced a. Resolution that was passed. In two thousand eight. And it turns out that that resolution was passed under the old Planning Act. Not the new Planning Act, later that year. In September, the new Planning Act was passed, and so. There's a question in my mind about whether that resolution needs to be redone or not by the Township Board. Because their resolution speaks to. Certain steps the Planning Commission may or may not take in developing the master plan, so. I've, I've got something that I want to give to the Township Attorney and ask him for advice on that.
Okay, and as, as far as the, the comments that have come back now.
That's all described in the, in the memo.
Okay.
And then, so.
If, I mean. What point, what will we be when we did, with, when we decide if we want to adopt those or just leave it as?
After the public.
After the public hearing, okay.
Right, again, this is all defined by the state.
Yeah.
This isn't.
Now, my question, I guess my next question is that public hearing, when, do we have that scheduled yet?
No, if, if you. If you can agree to changes tonight, we could do the public hearing next, next month.
Mm-hmm.
If you want to see another version of this, then obviously it gets pushed back.
Yeah.
So nobody on the Board of Trustees had any comments?
The only comment that we received was from Ron Pop that. I, there was another note that I got about the spelling of one of the former Township Board members' names was incorrect. But.
My question is, is would we be in a position to make a motion and improve that as it is right now or, or. Make the change, but we have to go to public comment first with, with the.
We have to put another version of this out there with any changes you want to make. Have that be the subject of a public hearing.
Okay, now, go ahead.
I would just like to see, I think. We don't need to see a whole other version, I would just like to see a pages, page or two pages of what the changes would be. Well, that's what's in your packet right now, with, with. Numbered, it looks like it's.
Under, under Ron Pop's name, these six or eight things, I believe.
Yeah, we've seen.
Are the exact, are the changes?
Those are the changes that I gleaned from his comments and looking.
These are the changes he suggests?
We, if, if you look through his comments, you saw a lot of. Flags or comments that it's, it's hard to know exactly how to respond to it, so.
Some of it doesn't make any sense.
So, so I took, I just went through it, this is my review of it, if you agree with it, great, if, if you want to add other ones, great, you know. This, that, that was my takeaway from it.
I guess what I'm asking though is, these, these eight things, this is Ron's comment and we need to talk each one of these over or these, have you had these listed? Are, you've already made these changes?
No, I've not, I've not touched. No, I've not, I've not touched the new document.
Okay.
I've I've not done anything yet. I I'm hoping that there's just one more version that goes through a public hearing and we don't. We don't have to keep producing documents that, but. Really up to you.
Uh as far as uh the East Bay, uh I I want to back up just a little bit. I know we're just talking about Ron, but as as far as the East Bay thing goes. I uh, when I, when I got the book out and read. When I, when I read that. When I, I think what you meant, you said. Uh, add the following sentence to the end of the second paragraph before the last sentence. I think you meant before the second to last sentence. If you, if you read that, it doesn't make any sense to put it before the last. Sentence, and then even even where I think you meant it to go, it still seems a little confusing to me. Um, what seems to make more sense to me is we have all these other bullet points. Uh, one through four bullet points of how to make this sort of stuff happen. And we're talking about Elk Rapids Master Plan and and uh, you know, them wanting to put a. Of non-motorized bike trail up and down Elk Lake Road area somewhere and and uh. And these other things with this thing come from East Bay Township seems to fit more in the. Bullet point category. It seems to just fit better there in my way of thinking.
Like a number five?
Yeah, that's I I think is is put a number five and just explain, you know, basically what you explained right here. East Bay. Township would like to work with us on some of the non-motorized trails. Is my suggestion. And then uh with the Ron Pop uh stuff. If you, if you s- I'm just gonna go through it the way.
Hey Mike, can I suggest something?
Sure.
Since there's only just this this few, why don't we just go through each one and discuss it everybody?
Perfect.
So that he can, we can just say yes or no on it and he's done with it. Does that make sense? Okay.
Okay, do we?
Uh, we'll start with. I think um, Randy, you got here the table counted spell of American Planning Association.
Yeah, I think I put APA rather than, you know.
Okay, you correct that, right? Okay, well.
It is in the packet, uh.
The top, the heading at the top of the page on the paper is Whitewater Township Master Plan Comments.
All right, um, so number one, everybody's agreement with, right? He's just gonna change them.
Yep.
Okay, number two, uh page fourteen, first paragraph, make less worry.
It's a little general.
Did you, you read the paragraph?
Uh, yeah, I'm just wondering.
It's a little wordy.
It is a little wordy and it wouldn't take much to straighten it up.
Do you have a suggestion on how to do that? Do you look at that already or?
I didn't write anything.
I I have a suggestion.
All right, there we come.
Let me just figure out my scribbling here. Okay, I think we need to uh take out the words. I have with you the par- through the thing, uh through this paragraph, it says uh. To plan for the organization, public event to allow for. Uh, I think we need to uh, gosh, how did I, hang on, I gotta see this.
Well, the word person needs to be removed, right? To allow for an open house and planning workshop, it says person, open.
Yeah, in person, exactly. That's part of what I got here too. Okay, so I think I got it figured out here. At the end of the second line in that first paragraph, it says, prepare a new survey to. And then. I think it should go. Plan for. An in-person open house and planning workshop. To list, oh, oh, somehow we gotta work the survey in there, the new survey, oh yeah, steps to prepare a new survey. To plan for an in-person open house and planning workshop. The list below provides a general description. Okay, so this just, instead of going on with all the extra stuff, it just tells what we did. We don't. We don't need to know about the organization and the public event part. We had open house, we had a planning workshop and a new survey, and that's what we need to, that's really all we need to say.
We're good at this, Mike.
Everybody kind of agree with that? That makes sense to you, Mike?
Can you read the, what the final version would be then?
This included a review of a prior community survey conducted in. Two thousand nine, steps to prep- to prepare a new survey. To plan for an in-person open house and planning workshop. The list below provides a general description of steps taken to develop this master plan. That make sense?
Everybody kind of agree with that?
Good with that?
Makes sense, Randy?
Think we could eliminate the word steps to prepare.
Right.
And. Well, why don't we just say and and open house and planning workshop?
No.
Cut it down even more, so it would say, a new survey to. Or update communities perspectives and. An open, a in-person open house and planning workshop.
And then I think the 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 first. Even the first um part, I feel like could could be simplified. This included a review. Of the two thousand nine community survey instead of.
Yeah, yeah.
Conducted in two thousand nine.
Less words, the better.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, number three, uh page fifty two on it. Third sentence, remove space between and and ORV. I think we all can agree on that, correct?
Um, did you look at the page? In in my book, and I'm, I am I, is this the current one or am I one behind?
September.
September eighteenth.
Yep. In in my book, what paragraph we on? Third sentence.
It might have already been corrected too.
Well, it looked to me like a space needed to be added between and in ORV. Instead of taking out.
Oh, yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Okay.
You're a catch.
Catch. All right, so everybody agrees with that then? Okay, number four, page fifty four, a change reference. From Mill Creek Elementary School to Mill Creek Academy.
Has it actually been changed to Mill Creek Academy now?
What the sign says on the outside.
And that, then I agree.
Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, number five, page sixty two, last sentence, correct reference.
What does that mean? I couldn't figure it out.
Let's also see next page that expands on this. Page sixty four that expands on.
Yeah, page sixty two, sixty three and sixty four, it's, but I I couldn't.
It's, it's not the next page. It was probably was, and then we edited it, so it's actually page sixty four.
So the whole thing is just to correct the reference on the right page?
Yeah.
What reference?
The the reference to the next page, it's not the next page, it's sixty four. They identified the scenic views and there's some pictures of those.
Yeah.
Scenic views. They're not on the next page, they're on page sixty four.
Or just put like say, say C sixty, page sixty four.
Yes, it's just correcting that reference.
Correcting the reference, okay.
Well, if you, if at the bottom of next page, there is this little thing that says scenic view. So, I mean, I kind of took that as part, is relating to. What page sixty two was talking about, and then, of course, you flip the page. And and there's the pictures. So I understand what you're saying, Randy, but when I, I was trying to figure it out on my own. At the bottom of page sixty three, there's a scenic view little caption in a se- in a paragraph there.
Yeah, maybe we should just say page sixty three and sixty four.
That's okay, that sounds good, yeah.
Okay.
All good with that?
All right, number six.
Number six isn't necessarily a change, but it's just a clarification about, I don't know why it was. Put in the terms that it was, but um, you know, it described what happened with the MPO and. That's, that information is right there in the PC. Thank commission passed a motion to recommend that Whitewater Township participate in the MPO. So it wasn't, I mean, I personally think it's a good idea, but it was, I wasn't. Voting member of the planning commission at that point, it's, you know, that was the. Was position of the planning commission.
What is an MPO?
Metropolitan Planning Organization, Metropolitan Planning Organization.
No. Well, no, I mean, I'd like to have it. On the start, the first thing you mention something, you spell it out. You don't.
So Randy, you're saying that there doesn't need to be any correction to it, or are there?
With more of an editorial comment that I that I thought was misplaced. So I corrected it.
Okay, so it's already corrected?
I mean, so, I mean, just the framing about, you know, why it's mentioned in here.
Which page is it on?
Uh, seventy four. And elsewhere too, there's more references to that, but.
And I think it is, it is spelled out the first time it shows up, isn't it? I thought I saw it spelled out somewhere.
It could be. Now, it says. Planning Association here. Hmm, others, planning. Organization.
Yeah, page seventy four, it just says.
Plan, and it's so, it's this organization, and that's why I was. Says MTA, planning our association. I don't know. It's one of the two. I really don't care. This is a little bit unrelated, but on page seventy four, right there, like the third sentence down from the top. It also references Mill Creek School again. So probably the book needs to be looked at in any place that references Mill Creek School needs to be changed.
Mill Creek Academy.
Yeah. Well, at the time this was prepared, that might have been.
Might be a good suggestion, is this the first time you mentioned it? The school, just note, make a note that it was changed from.
In the master plan, just make that known.
Formally.
Yeah, formerly known as.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good way.
School formerly known as.
Okay, are we clear on that one then? And six?
Yes.
Do you clear enough, Randy? You know what you want to do there? Number seven, page seventy seven. To address concerns over suggestions that recommendations are too strong and specific. Add the following sentence to the end of the last sentence in the second paragraph. To read naturally, comma, all proposed specific action steps toward goals. And the following material are subject to further identification of alternatives and investigation.
I I kind of agree with this, and I've I've alluded to this in other conversations we've had about the master plan. And another uh, a little note I wrote down here to remind myself about here at the meeting. Uh, I I believe uh this type of notation needs to be. A couple places in the book. I don't, I haven't looked it over, say specifically where, but uh, and I think this needs to be in there. Because this helps uh. This kind of helps remind people and helps to ensure to people that a lot of this. Stuff is ideas and places to look for help. These aren't, just because we're suggesting this. In the master plan, doesn't mean that this is exactly what we're gonna do. This is just what the information, the direction the information led us. We we still have uh research and a lot of thought to go into this, so. I I I think of that being put in ma- maybe here and uh maybe it's the beginning of the book or maybe at the end of the book. I, you know, it it wouldn't hurt it to be in there a couple of places.
Kind of like a disclaimer.
Well, yeah, uh, you know, sometimes when people read stuff and they're like. When we go through this, we've been through it all from start to finish, so we kind of have a lot better idea what we're talking about. Well, somebody blind reads this, doesn't, hasn't sent through any of this stuff, wow, that seems awful restrictive all of a sudden. So just because we say we'd like to look at this organization or this type of funding or this type of. Doesn't mean that's exactly where we're going, what we're gonna do. This is just the. Vision we were given in the direction it looks like would work.
But I think it is pretty well explained in there. It says goals. I mean, that's the definition of goals. It's not, we're gonna do it, this is what we want to try to achieve.
Well, to me, goals means that is what we're gonna achieve, that is the.
Well, that's, that's what you want to achieve, that's what your goal is. We want to get there. It's not saying we're gonna get there. But it's something we want to get to. We're striving for, this is our goal, we're gonna strive for.
But, but we, what could we agree to just put that in the front of the book somewhere where it's appropriate as a disclaimer? Would that work, Keith? Sure. I mean, whatever, Randy?
I'm I'm just enjoying the fact that for the first time in a long time, I remember that somebody saying the master plan needs to be more vague. Like I say, what doesn't sit not clear enough is not specific enough. So, so, but I. That's fine with me.
What is it, what's, what's everybody think? What you, what you, Denise, what do you think?
Well, and you put it in the front, that's great, but people might just gloss over that, that like this section of them, and they'll say. You know, i- is this where we're heading? And and then, and I guess from, you know, your master plan is what you're basing. The direction uh or the trend of your ordinances on it, until you make the ordinances, it's just. You know, people's opinion.
That is a good point for the goal.
Yeah.
That is a good, that, to me, that's a good point to take it back to the, these are goals. Too, so.
And that's, you know, that's the whole thing. The first thing it says is vision and goals.
Yeah.
Yes, so I think.
How you explain that anymore than?
Yeah, and and in parentheses, it says, rather than actual goals that can be used to chart a course forward, it's planning principles. At, you know, the end of the first paragraph.
And Keith read that right out of the, out of the book there, says vision, what's that, what did that say there, Keith, vision and goals?
Yeah, it's right on the very top. Vision and goals.
So I, I think it's in there.
I think, I think it's pretty well explanatory. Like I do, you don't know what that means, like you just look them up.
And that kind of, if you look at, to me, what Ron was. Requesting there, it's there. It's already in there.
We're adding another.
Yeah, I don't. I don't. I don't think that's necessary. It's already in.
I agree with Carl.
I mean, this is a vision. You know, the, the master plan is a vision of what we think may happen and. And these are just different. Uh, strategies to do it. That 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 is a nothing statement.
That's my opinion.
Yeah.
To me, it's a waste of ink.
My opinion, it's already in there, right, right? Keith, he showed, just showed it to us. So my opinion is already there. So we wouldn't need it, but what do you, what's your opinion? Randy?
You know, Ron sent us all a letter, I believe.
Yes.
It was like.
Yep.
How many peaches were there? A lot of work and to point things out, uh, a lot of it is clerical kind of stuff, but. He did put a lot of work into it.
Do you feel it needs any more? I don't think there's any harm in putting number seven in there, it's like that.
I would, I would go with whatever Randy says on that, cause he's way more.
I'm good with whatever you guys decide. If what we already have is there, it's already in there.
Needed.
Or if we need to add it, we can. I think it's already in there. If you read, read, if you, would you read that again, Keith, please? You just got that top of it.
This where it says visions and goals for Whitewater Township?
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's, that's basically saying the same thing. Or it says towards goals.
We're ready to put that if you wanted to put that.
But we can sure add it if you, everybody feels.
The end of the last sentence in the second paragraph.
Well, if Randy thinks it needs to be in there, it'll be in there, then I think I would agree with that.
Okay.
And.
I mean, I, I think we have a pretty good picture of the direction what we want the township to go based upon this, but there are other alternatives or things that can be looked at, or maybe it plays out a little bit different than what we anticipate now, because it might be a year, it's a year or two before some of this gets done, or three or whatever, I don't know.
And, and these are visions and goals, and when it comes to public comments, that people who don't agree with them will bring out their what their thoughts, and this is just a vision, and we never do anything without public comments, so.
Right.
Right? So, anyway. Yeah.
I mean, we, at the end of the day, you gotta put words on the paper that, that say what's, what you're doing, or what you wanna do, and, and so you know, we can adding a few more weasel words in there is probably.
Does anybody disagree with them putting that on there? Do you have consensus to, to add it? Where would you want to add it?
He put it right where it said it was gonna be.
End of the last sentence. Okay.
The only thing I would change is I, I don't think I would start it with naturally. I think I would start it with all, all proposed.
Yep.
Specific action steps.
Yeah, I agree. Let's agree, you know?
And I don't think it weakens well, you know, what you've done, I mean, what we all worked on with the master plan, and I agree with what Keith said, it's already there, but I don't think it weakens it to add it in there.
Good. Okay, we agree on that? Agreed to add it? Okay.
Number eight, page ninety-four. Or second column.
Yeah, it's, we talked about eliminating R1, but we didn't say what, what it's, what it would become, I guess.
Or did we say we wanted to make it an A1?
Yeah.
We didn't.
We didn't say that.
And that's the problem, yeah.
And did we intend to say that? I don't recall.
I, I thought we did, but.
Yes, I, I do go.
That was my intention. I mean, the rest of the townships.
Right.
Agged.
But, but we didn't say it. It was just sort of implied, but.
Right, but, and I think this is right, it should be said. I, I agree with that. Okay.
Okay.
So are we saying that as is, it's good?
No, that we, that it would revert to A1.
Okay.
Need to add that.
Randy, my question, does that require any changes to our zoning map?
It would, yes.
It will, yeah, when we do it.
When we do it. Okay.
We haven't done it yet.
Yeah, this is also bulls and.
Vision and goals.
Okay.
Goals.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
So we all agree on that then?
Yes.
All right, then other edits. Uh, are these from you, Randy?
Yeah, I just realized that we obviously we need to fill out the other steps taken in on page fourteen, which is.
It looks like we planned on it, the, uh, you know, at the bottom of that, it says.
Yeah.
Do be continued.
Right.
So it looks like we planned on doing that.
I always like to put dates and a process, and people proceed, you know, what steps were taken and how we went about this.
Right.
You know, it gives a track record and shows it was done methodically and, and deliberately, clearly, and public input.
Okay, so we all agreed upon that?
Hmm.
And then number two, update PC members and acknowledgement page. Include the current township board and correct spelling of former treasurer's name. Update designation of former members on the PC.
Oh, is that on page two?
That's just on the acknowledgement page at the very beginning.
Yeah, but H2 knows, master plan, the top, that has the board of trustees and then the planning commission. Yeah.
Right. I think that's, everybody kind of agree with that, correct? Okay, no issues?
Okay.
And that's all of it?
Good. Well, all in agreement?
Yep.
Now we have to take a vote on that?
So the next step, if you're prepared to, is you'd be to schedule a public hearing for February.
And that would be based on these edits.
With these edits incorporated into a document to be posted on the website and available in the township hall.
Okay, I think we need to make a motion and vote for that.
I have one more thing I wanted to just, uh, ask Randy about. Um, chapter five, uh, I haven't been on page sixty-two, sixty-three. And I noticed, like, in some of these sentences, uh, it's regular print, and then there's words that are highlighted, or it's like heavier print. And I'm curious why that is. I mean, it doesn't seem to be throughout, well, I do find it other places in the book, but it's I, I'm curious about that. It seems, it seems like it's steering. The words, the words are steering enough. This seems like I don't know, somehow it's like we're, we're pushing the issue. We're not supposed to push it. We're supposed to suggest it, and let the, the public's supposed to drive. We're supposed to, we're just supposed to, like, keep it between the lanes.
What, what page are you?
I'm on, I'm on page sixty-two and sixty-three, and I, I'm gonna read the thing at the top of the page on sixty-three.
Okay.
On the topic of regular minimum lot size in agriculture zone district, that's all in just regular print.
Yeah.
Then it says residents narrowly indicate that the existing minimum lot size of about an acre is too small, so I don't understand why, why are we making that last part of that sentence enhanced lettering? It says the same thing without the enhanced lettering. With the enhanced lettering, to me, it says we are behind this, or we are pushing this. And as a planning commission, we aren't supposed to push anything. It's, in my understanding.
It's really just a graphic technique, drawing out, drawing the, the key point from that, rather than reading a bunch of bullets, but if, if that's, you think that's problematic, we can get rid of that.
Well, I, I just, that's, that's my thing.
I mean, it wasn't, there's no, there's no ulterior motive in that. It's just I, I've done that before with other things. It's kind of a habit where, you know, you get a lot of text, and sometimes people don't like to plow through all of it. They wanna see the high points, and so you bold what's the main point of the paragraph, but.
Yeah, and what you're worried about, they won't they, they won't read it. They'll go past it rather than you, it draws attention to it, but some when you, or you're thinking like, good reason.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the, if, if we're just that one, I would say, yeah, that, that's, that's strange to just draw it out, but.
But, I mean, it, this couple of pages and and, uh, even other places in the book, I see that, and it I didn't notice, like, I've, I've said this before in these meetings. Every time I read this book, I see something else, okay? I can't help it. That's just how I am.
No, that's great.
So, and when I, this last time, uh, going through Ron's stuff and, and, uh, East Bay's comment, you know, flipping through here, trying to like, make sure I know exactly what they're talking about. I, I know, I picked that up, and I'm like, that kind of looks like we're trying to steer to me in, in my mind, but I, I read different than all of you, everybody. I read differently.
Totally. I mean, I can agree with that. I mean, cause it does have, like, you go that next line, and that's not bolded at all.
Right.
There. And, you know, I think it should at least be uh, either take them all out or in every spot where it indicates the residents decided or read as, then they should all be anything where it says after that, any, anything where there was a you wanna point that out to anybody reading this.
This, right, this came from a survey of residents.
But I think that, you know, like you said, you have that one line where it's uh, bolded, and then the very next line, which is equally important about at least the five acres, is not bolded.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would just say it'd be probably easier just to take it all.
And that, like, I thank you for that, because without reading the whole page, you, you weren't getting, nobody was really understanding what I was saying.
Yeah.
And that is exactly my point. Thank you.
But, so just, just take off, pick out the boldies?
It, it's, it's just my suggestion. Everybody else needs to put their input in. I'm, I'm just one person.
I can't agree with what he said there. It does.
Yeah, it, it, it does. Yeah, when you bold it, it's giving emphasis. Um, if you wanna refer it back to this, in summary, the following can be said about the results, that sentence, and say in summary, uh, the bold print highlights the, or, or however.
Draws attention to it.
Yeah. Do, do you want to, I don't, or if it's just something you go, it's not worth talking about that much.
You see, you have to take it all up the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I think then it sounds like we're, we're in agreement just to take the bowling out. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Mike?
Now I'll be quiet.
Mike?
I'm good with that.
Denise?
I, I am good with that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Green?
I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I have one thing that I wanna bring up about the community opinions regarding short-term rentals. Um, and, and Ron's comment, you know, that two-thirds of the respondents are in support, and, and I don't know if you remember, but Gary Biskowski made the, um, point that the question was poorly worded, because he, for instance, is in support of short-term rentals with restrictions. Um, but he would not be in support of short-term rentals without restrictions, and that wasn't an option. And so this, the way that you read that pie chart, it looks like two-thirds of people are in support of short-term rentals when the question on the survey was poorly worded. So I'm just wondering if there's some way to clarify.
However, there was, uh, one of the questions, um, uh, the, the big meeting that we had, the open house, uh, the board that I had on, a lot of people were putting that in the, in the comments, and they are in where they suck, you know, I, I, I support it, but I, only with regulation.
Yeah.
You know, some kind of.
I think the issue that I have is with the pie chart. Because that doesn't come through.
Oh, this.
I'm on, yeah, on page sixty-three. Cause that, I agree with you that that, that that's in there, but it, in the pie chart, that's not how it reads. But the pie chart's based on the survey, right?
Yeah, it is, and I guess.
And what Keith's referring to was, was, you know, at, at one of our public workshops.
I think we all recognize that there is probably a lot more work to do on short-term rentals to really understand what people think. We, we had room for one question on the general community survey, and, you know, basically tried to phrase it as best we could, you know, for that, but, um.
I don't think this tells us anything that we don't already know. It's, it's gonna be a big mess when we get into it, and yes.
Yeah.
You know, this, this in itself is not, we're not gonna take this and say, hey, we're doing this because of this. We're gonna have to start all over again.
Okay.
I didn't.
This is just a guide to get us going, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. I didn't have a problem with that at all. Like, I mean, I thought kind of sits where we're at, you know, from all the surveys, and, you know, that's gonna be a awful thing to get into when we do, no matter what we do.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be light. Just, I just wanted to comment on the issue you had, that first statement. Of course, you know that I'm one of the, one of the things that one acre is too small. But I agree with you, it doesn't need to be highlighted.
Yeah.
So.
Well, you, Reen, are you okay with this the way it is for now?
Yeah.
Knowing that.
As long as it's clear.
Knowing there's a lot more work to do on that issue, and we can there really should probably be a survey on just that topic.
I agree.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
We'll get to deal with that, or.
Or an open house on it, where you could run realistically.
Yeah.
You know, if we wanna get a good pulse of what, what everybody wants and how they wanna do it, that'd be a good way to do it. So, or, or a mail-in survey. Or something.
But this, I think.
At this point, we're all, I believe we're all set to have Randy make the changes we agreed upon and move forward.
At this point, I'll make a motion that um, with the changes that we've just agreed upon, that we could move forward in having an open house.
A public hearing.
Second?
I second it. Denise Pelton in seconds.
Roll call? Okay, sure. You bet. Hmm, sorry to take it back.
No, it's part of that. So you know, we made a motion to schedule a public hearing with a master plan that the edits discussed incorporated into the document and posted on the website. You had mentioned those words earlier, and I thought you mentioned one third part of that. And posted to the website and something else.
Oh, available in the township hall.
So, uh, with those notes that I had taken, did you want to expand your virgins at all, or just a motion to schedule a public hearing?
Um, I think that we should, um, based on the edits that we agreed upon today. And those, I guess we could give you a list of those edits. For that motion. Can we do that? Do we have to do that right now?
I think the majority of it's in that memo, so.
That is in the memo, but I do need to question, that was Pete cut off of your motion. I mean, you're, you want those additional words in there? You're telling me, yes, you do.
I do. I want the, I wanted to clearly state that the, um, items that we agreed upon today must be changed on the master plan to have the public hearing.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you for helping me clarify.
And will you list them in the minutes then, from the from the agenda?
I did not get as specific as to each one of these, because the memo would pass it, but I have indicated that each planning commission, not the board, uh, discussed Mr. Nolan's memo detail, and each comment received, as well as several undermined corrections. There was consensus to all of the changes presented and discussed. Nolan will make these edits to the current master plan draft. Maybe lots of.
I think that sounds good to me. I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yeah, this was part of the board. Yeah.
Yeah, I believe we're good with that.
And, um, and part two, that I will make reference to response that was provided back by township, just wanna mention their topic of response and, um, Mr. Ron Pot. Was he the former town supervisor?
Yes.
Okay. And I have those a list of changes, corrections from him and minor edits. Yeah.
That's good.
And then those last three lines that I mentioned in summary.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ready for a roll call? Okay. Mike Jacobson?
Yes.
Keith DeYoung?
Yes.
Cole Rubble?
Yes.
Al Eaton?
Yes.
Denise Pelton?
Yes.
Randy Millick?
Yes.
Reen Stratten?
Yes.
Okay. I'll pass it up there. Okay. I, I had a question on the map, Randy. Uh, how is, the map is, is finished, isn't it?
It is. The correction was made, um, It is, the correction was made, um. With regard to the, and there's the large version of it, it's been brought it out, it's over there.
Okay.
People can look at. The color changes, the map that's online has not changed yet, but but the the large one has been changed, they did a hatch pattern, so.
Oh, nice.
Much better to tell the difference, Green brought up the last time that there was, but. The two colors were too close between the CO, uh, OPAD and the commercials, so. Thing wishable.
Okay, is there any other comments for the master plan or the map? Sounds like we're all good. All good, okay. Okay, next thing is uh, uh, new business election of officers. For that time of the year again, um. Shall we start with the chair?
Sure.
Okay. Hello?
Any volunteers or?
Any volunteers?
Are you still interested in? I will volunteer.
Chair, okay, Keith, okay.
Anyone else?
I'd second.
I nominate Keith as the chair.
I seconded.
Is nobody else that wanted to join in on that?
Yeah, we don't have our.
Mike Jacobson. Okay, Keith, Keith is chair, do we have a nomination for vice chair?
Jake, that's you know?
No.
Let me let me think, no.
Oh, that's actually, you you'd be surprised, um. You wind up there more than what you think, you know, Rachel, she she left and then of course Linda, she's got elected thankfully, good. Good for them, and you wind up doing more than what you think, but it's okay, but.
You gotta be willing.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta be willing. We have a.
Do we need to vote on the chair?
Did I miss the actual vote in getting all those names right or was there?
Oh, no, we didn't vote. So we gotta do that before we move on.
Is that a roll call?
A roll call vote, yes.
Mike Jacobson?
Yes.
I'll skip mine, Carl Rubble?
Yes.
Al Keaton?
Yes.
Denise Pelton?
Yes.
Randy Milnick?
Yes.
Reen Stratton?
Yes.
Made it.
You made it. Okay, can we have a nomination for uh, vice chair?
No, I'm not sticking around.
He's bailing.
Carol, are you interested?
No.
Are you holding out for secretary or?
I was holding out for secretary except that this wasn't what was described to me.
That point is it's just right.
Yeah. Vice chair, thank you. Yeah, that's right, I'll go for vice chair.
I'd I'd nominate Reen Stratton for the vice chair.
I would second that, Keith DeYoung would second that.
Oh, Al Keaton, sorry, Al Keaton. Yeah, Al Keaton nominated Reen Stratton for vice chair. Keith seconded, right?
Keith DeYoung seconded.
Yes, Keith DeYoung seconded. Uh, roll call, when ready.
Okay, Mike Jacobson?
Yes.
Keith DeYoung, yes, Carl Rubble?
Yes.
Al Keaton?
Yes.
Uh, Denise Pelton on?
Here, I'm sorry, yes. Sorry.
Randy Milnick?
Yes.
Okay, would now. Can we have a nomination for secretary?
Denise?
Denise?
If if you will train me on everything, cause I know nothing about the equipment. But, yes, I I will accept the nomination if someone.
I'll nominate Denise Pelton in for secretary.
I'll second it.
Al Keaton?
Alright, ready for a vote?
Yeah, roll call when ready?
Like Jacobson?
Yes.
Keith DeYoung, yes, Carl Rubble?
Yes.
Al Keaton?
Yes.
Randy Milnick?
Yes.
Reen Stratton?
Yes.
Okay, we have our new officers, our Keith DeYoung is the chair. Reen Stratton is the vice chair and Denise Pelton is the secretary.
He had that piece of paper with that roster that I need to fill, then we can just pass it around.
Um, which ones?
It was kind of a blank sheet.
Okay, election of officers, okay, our next. Next thing we had was uh, the twenty twenty five meeting schedule. I've, I printed out a. Copy for everyone to look at. And it looks like, um, if you have had a chance to look that over, the meeting schedule for twenty twenty five.
Does it go the whole year?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, right here.
Which one is it?
Yes. Yes, yes, that was, yeah, because the reason, the reason, uh, it seems like everything else was good for the first Wednesday, but the. The July was different because it was close to Fourth of July. And I know I'm not gonna be here and.
What day is Labor Day?
What day is Labor Day?
First, right?
Yeah, and the third is the PC.
It's not a problem for me.
For people who travel.
Well, it would just be us.
Yeah, I I don't know, uh.
So you're saying it should be the tenth?
I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying based on their schedule from twenty five, twenty four, twenty five, it should be from. April through the end of March.
Yeah, this one here is.
Your meetings are already scheduled through March of next year.
Yeah, those those we changed back when, um, we our meet, we had changed those dates. Um, for elections to April, but then we voted to change back to January for our calendar year. Once we realized, which put this back in, so that's, that's what we've. Yes, yes.
The schedule's always. Been as long as I've been here for the uh, budget year. Uh, April, I think it's April to April, if you guys just. Last January.
Did you, did you?
Changed things and so I think it ought to be April to April. Isn't it, well, it's been, uh.
We can do that.
I mean, I I don't care, but other than that, messed everything up, but. You know, with with the. Schedule when we changed it, you know, we didn't have to.
I like as good as it is.
I do too, but. I like seeing the one year on it.
Yeah, I don't really.
You wanna go into uh, next year, the twenty twenty six year?
We did. Uh, it's just.
And then February? And then February twenty?
No, no, it just runs from January eighth, which was today to January seventh of next year.
Yeah, do you wanna do February and March?
No, I just go one year.
That'd be next year.
Yeah, that'd be following year.
Oh, okay.
So nobody wants to make a change to September?
I don't, I don't, I don't need to.
No, I don't need to.
No.
The only other thing I see wrong with this is at the top of the page, the like the second line, it says. Following dates at seven P P.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Got a new time frame?
Uh, the appointments, oh. We changed some stuff around and that changed the the dates for the for the calendar. Uh, but what we we changed, but when we changed the dates, what happened was. Uh. Appoint, people's appointments didn't fall on the same time when the, when this calendar changed or something. Somehow or another, we had to change back because we made a change that we shouldn't have made.
Cause our appointments are based on calendar year, not.
Not fiscal year. Yeah, right, and the only thing is they decided because, uh. Rachel was going to be done in April, but by law, we're supposed to make the appointments year to year. And you have in your bylaws how to handle when somebody leaves, the vice chairman takes over. So that was totally unnecessary to make that change, but as I recall, every, in the past, cause I didn't read it right. There was, uh, I picked up a calendar there and the, and this goes back to three years. The, I believe the dates were.
Get that corrected.
Yeah, I think that's the way it was. And I I, you know, I don't know that that matters one way or another, you know. I'm I'm happy with them calendar year to calendar year.
Alright, well, I would go ahead. I'll go ahead and make a motion then. To prove this as written, except for the change in the first paragraph, it should read seven PM instead of seven PP. Yes, I am.
And I'll second that.
Yeah, uh, for those, uh, you know, I I would like to add in the February, March dates only because. Uh, for planning purposes, that's only a a year away and I kinda plan out two years. Just for trips and things like that, so.
Well, I think everybody knows that they're, you know, the first Wednesday of the month, unless, you know, unless. The first Wednesday, unless, you know, unless it collides with a holiday or something.
Yeah, I mean, I I'll I'll go with that, that doesn't, I can go with that. So, I mean, I'll just assume that when I'm planning.
Is it in our bylaws?
Yeah, it is in bylaws, I guess. First Wednesday.
First Wednesday.
Yeah, it is.
Unless.
Unless, unless we change it for a reason, we've got a reason because of the. Fourth of July and the one.
Yeah.
Holidays.
Mm-hmm, holidays.
Okay.
We're not gonna have a meeting on, that's gonna fall on both days. Like Christmas and New and Thanksgiving, we're doing ours Thursday before.
To make a motion?
I didn't, you seconded.
Of roll call vote to adopt the, oh, Keith already said that.
Are you ready?
Roll call?
Uh, Mike Jacobson?
Yes.
Keith DeYoung, yes. Carl Rubble?
Yes.
Al Keaton?
Yes.
Denise Pelton?
Yes.
Randy Milnick?
Yes.
Reen Stratton?
Yes.
Motion adopted? Okay, the second, okay, the schedule. Okay, the second thing we need to discuss, item eleven C is the budget. Has everybody had a chance to look that over? Sure you have? Randy, I had one question for you, um, for consulting, and I know you're gonna try to help us with a new planner. How, is that, is that something that you, with the board? Supply them to us?
Yes, although I think it's the the name of the person charging to your consulting, it would change.
Yes, yes.
So. So that should be.
Okay.
No problem, I guess the only, the only thing is I would say that the costs are likely to go up.
Yeah, oh, yeah, mm-hmm, yeah. Okay. And then, um. So when you look at the, uh, seven oh two to seven sixteen wages, we had, uh. We've already requested last. We had, uh, twenty one thousand six hundred for that. And I believe this year we have, will have twelve regular meetings, I was thinking possibly two special meetings. And then possibly two joint meetings, is that, is that reasonable? That's total of sixteen meetings?
Out of the question.
No.
And, um.
So.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I I just did the math, it's, um, for one meeting, it's five hundred and seventy dollars for a PC meeting in. Um, that includes the recording secretary.
That'd be more than that.
Well, it's a hundred and twenty for the chair, seventy five times six is five seventy.
Yeah, well, we're, yeah, we're, there's uh, seven at a hundred dollars a piece, that's seven hundred.
I didn't add Randy, Randy's into the two seventy, yeah, it's almost a thousand dollars. So if you're figuring on two special meetings. That'd be another, it'd be twelve thousand.
Yeah, and then two joint.
You didn't, fourteen thousand.
Yeah. So we.
And and I don't think you're overdoing it on the extra meeting.
Yeah, and on the twenty one and twenty one, excuse me. And so we had twenty one that last, uh, added up to twenty one thousand six hundred. And, uh, we, of course, doesn't look like we, um. Spent it all, but we may, with what we have coming up, we have some other issues coming up, we may actually have some more, so if we left it at. Uh, what would we wanna set that figure at? I put it, mine, mine was twenty one six. I don't know if there's a.
That would be twenty one meetings?
No, twenty one thousand six hundred.
A thousand a meeting, is this for the salaries?
That's that's for seven oh two to seven sixteen.
Oh, okay, oh, with the Medicare and everything.
And that's what we budgeted last year, and I I think we should stick with that same number.
Eighteen thousand?
That gives you room for some extra meetings. And, uh. If the, uh, joint meetings with the board fans out and keeps going on, gives you room for that too, which is, in my opinion, was a great thing.
Yep, and we may, so I've, are we okay with, uh, that up to that point? Twenty one six, okay, the next one, uh, what I looked at had on that was, uh, item seven twenty seven, office supplies and expenses. We had two thousand and, um. I added, I added, uh, twenty five hundred for a total of forty five, cause the reason what I was thinking when we get. Oops, we get that master plant, when we get our, um, zoning map done. That is, I'd like to see us get a nice copy like that and put it in the glass. Maybe case it here and hang it on the wall here somewhere. Um, so when people come in. I don't know what that cost, but, but, uh, I I thought that really looks nice in here somewhere to have that, that map up there. And then what I was wondering too, would we wanna have? Of course, Randy, would, would we want the, each of the offices to have one, just the, um. Supervisors might wanna have one in our office and possibly. Yeah, it's only, so I think. I think if we made like four big ones, nice ones for each one, so. And put them in glass where they could have them on the walls and it's so easy for them to access. So that that cost, so.
I would like to see. Just so you know, we can also make those eleven by seventeens too for people. I mean, just, I mean, it's it's all digital, so it's it's easy to make smaller versions to more people.
So what size are you thinking of?
I was. That size there, yeah, no, that size there that we have rolled up over there, I don't think you can see it. Yeah, okay, what size is that?
It's thirty by sixty.
Thirty by sixty. That's what I was thinking for the, for like, um, zoning administrators' office and for the, uh. Supervisor's office and for the treasurer's office and one out here to have them there, maybe have a glass for them.
Well, those are fifty dollars a piece.
Yeah, and then if we wanted to put them in, you know, to get a, you can hang a nice glass case for them. You know, something framed like these are here.
What's that?
I was gonna say, you're not gonna want the glass.
Okay, that's, okay.
And and like right away, it's gonna be changed, once we get the.
Oh, the A one?
Yeah, once we get that changed, we change.
Well, there's a few other changes to make on there too.
Yeah, so it's gonna be an ever changing map. So the I, the idea of putting it on a glass is kinda cool, but it's gonna always change, so.
I mean. You can just swap out the map.
Yeah, just swap it out.
It might be nice to have one nice big copy out here where the public could see, but for each individual office in there. Probably a roll up one is probably more appropriate for their.
Okay, it would be nice for us to have one right there. When we're talking, we can point to.
Put that in glass or something, so it can't be written, wrote on and, and then like Randy said, you just swap it out.
Yeah, I agree with that, absolutely.
And I I like the fact you added more because I, what I would like to see us do when we get into these. Uh, zoning ordinances, um, to all have the same book. And as we make edits, we all edit.
And as we make edits, we all edit our books together.
Yeah.
And we keep everything the same, so as we're going through them, we all have the same material. One version.
And, and every.
And that will take money to do that, because.
It's gonna take money to do that, yes.
Yeah, I think we should do that, and, and, uh, I've got three large three-ring binders at home with the ordinances, and then I think Heidi made it, made it for us.
We did.
And, uh, so.
We'll have a new one.
Yeah, if, if we could put it on a thumb drive and then just download it to our laptops, then we'd have it, it's easier to search on a computer, you just, you know, find word and I, that's what I, I think would be a great addition to our laptops that we're supposed to be using.
Okay, we okay with that? Okay, postage, we had, uh, two thousand, and if, what I was thinking there, we should leave that, because if we go to like these, to mailing out questionnaires, for instance, on, uh, on par slot parcels or some other topic that, uh, short-term rentals. Go ahead and mail out a topic and, because you, you know, we got six hundred and some back on our questionnaires when we mailed them out, so if we can get back a lot of input, um, we might even want to hire those people we had last time to individually analyze it for us, so nobody could say it's corrupt, we corrupted it. And, uh, or maybe they could even do it for us, you know, on a topic like that. So I think we would.
There's options.
Yeah, there's options.
We have to, we have to mail out for any change we make on the zoning ordinances, right? Oh, yeah, everything going forward is an amendment. I would, I mean, the original budget was three thousand, I think we should leave it at that.
Okay, three thousand?
Are you, which line item are you on?
We are on seven twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven, opposite place.
Seven twenty-eight.
Postage, uh, okay, so we don't have, oh, you're, when we do the, um, notification in the, in the newspapers, is, that's what is in, is that in there? Because the postage, I thought that was more for mailing out.
It is, but there's, there's legal ads that have been.
That goes under that?
Public hearings, for example, for those special use permits.
Is that under publishing or is that under postage?
I don't know.
Postage is gonna be the people within three hundred feet that are notified, that's dedicated to the P C or the Z B A. But there's actually a line item for publishing.
Yeah.
Is that, is that public hearing publishing?
There's a one for printing, there's one for publishing.
I said, I think we should just keep them both the same as the original budget last year.
If we don't use it, they just return it to the general fund.
Yes, or if we made, if we go over on something, we may be able to, to move it, move it if we need to.
Yeah, the, the only thing is, is they're gonna, um, like last year, this was, this is what they submitted, that's not what they actually got, and you have to justify why you want like two thousand dollars in postage. They're gonna wonder, you know, what are we going to do to, what are we gonna mail out, but I mean, we can leave it there and.
Yeah, I just leave it there and the board can look it over and if they have some questions on a specific item, we can answer them. Um, number eight oh four, professional services, uh, requested was, was forty thousand. What I'm, what I was wondering under that, that line item, is we're gonna have a, another plan, have a new planner. And then what I was wondering on some of these topics, like short-term rentals, or if we want to address, um, this property division where one acre versus five acres, if we want to try to have, um, you know, some town halls or some meetings specifically for that topic, and get input from the public and say, what, what do you want? And if we could, you know, so that's gonna cost if we'd have to go to the school and rent the, rent the hall again. Um, and then those people, Randy, uh, those people that did our, um, master plan, our surveys, that does not Laura, who is it?
That works Northwest.
No, is that, that, was it? You know, we may want to try even contact, contract them to help us with, with, uh, you know, some, one of the hot button topics, take it up and see if we can have a survey.
Uh, I'd like to bring up, uh, a point regarding to a planner. When I came on board, we did not have a planner, that was a suggestion I made, because our master plan, as I said at the time, was a history lesson, and uh, we had Bob Hall here at the time, uh, uh, they said that, you know, to do the master plan right, is any, you know, does anybody know how to do it? And we really didn't, because they had done it in-house the time before, and there was a lot of problems, so the suggestion was made and agreed to that we needed to hire a planner for the master plan. The question I have is, once the master plan is done, uh, do we, should we still have a planner? And, and my posi- position would be yes, but maybe not as often, because we're not doing this great big master plan, it would be for specific, you know, uh, issues, like you, you mentioned that the, uh, you know, one being the, uh, short-term rentals and, and as I said, uh, suggested on a few things, uh, we needed to know what other townships have done on a few things that we've gotten into, uh, one was when we were working on the, uh, of thing for marijuana, we went around with a committee to other townships and cities to get their experiences. Uh, as I was saying, in maintaining our rural atmosphere, uh, there is a problem, uh, I have a problem, a dispute on whether, for example, our agricultural rent, what, should it be one acre, five acres, ten acres? What, that would be a, for a planner, possibly to investigate what other communities have done on that issue, if there's anything that's a happy medium, I don't know that there is or isn't, but that would be where we would want to have a planner, so I would think we would need a planner, but do we need him full-time or not? I don't know.
Randy?
Yes, well, I, so I think, I, I think in my view, the, the planner that we retain to help us is gonna focus largely on zoning for the next couple of years here to get us, you know, we have, we have things shorn up, I believe, and clarified and reorganized and got the major bugs out of it, but there's still a ton of work to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
So, so I, in fact, I distributed, I updated the list.
You're not leaving.
I'm just kind of keeping a rela- running tally of, of things that are in the master plan and and general ordinances and things that we will need at some point to.
Work to keep one busy.
I don't, I don't, it's not gonna be a matter of.
I, I'm, I'm just curious on the actual, uh, budget that was printed out on the, on the sixth, we, that's only eleven thousand four fifty has been spent of the forty thousand of professional services, and I'm wondering if that's right. I mean.
Uh.
What do you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, on this one, I passed.
Twenty, twenty-six.
Twenty-six, seven.
I passed, so, yeah, this is what was printed out, uh, a couple, on the sixth, Wendy printed it out. So the amended budget is the actual budget that they approved, and then the actual through January, I'm wondering if I'm.
Oh.
That right?
It dated one fourteen twenty-four, well, that was January.
I, I, are you looking at this one?
This one's.
Oh, this one.
No, I, I hand, I kind of pass these around, because I asked Wendy for a, a budget, I have an extra one here.
Yeah.
Why don't the numbers agree though, like?
Yeah, why don't they match?
Well, if you look at, on the.
Oh, it says page one.
One fourteen of two thousand twenty-four.
One.
At the top, one, six.
So, this is budget submitted, this is budget submitted, yes, we're going over.
Last year. So all you should be really looking at is the original budget and amended budget on here.
Right, but those don't agree, right?
Well, uh, Denise passed out, this is, who made this up?
Wendy printed this out.
So who, who came up with these numbers? This is one, six, twenty, twenty-five.
No, but the amended numbers don't even match up with last year.
So, so who, 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 who gave up?
So the little, um, yeah.
This is the budget from twenty twenty-four that we had.
That's not what it's approved, what was approved is the, on this form I gave you, this budget with the little, um, the, that was what was approved.
The amended budget is what's approved.
You got, you gotta remember, that's, that's a different board though, that's, that's a totally different board. So I think we need to submit them what we think we're gonna need, and then they can.
Yeah, but I was, that's why I brought up. Year through January, eleven four, and I'm wondering if that current year is, you know, we're nine months out of a.
Think we need to look, look at that, because that can't be right.
Yeah.
What we need to look at is last year's and, and what they approved.
Yeah.
And whether or not we feel that that's gonna be enough to get us through what, what we gotta do.
Okay.
My question to Randy is, you think forty thousand dollars is gonna get us through changing the. Well, I, it's only. I think there's an issue here of how much bandwidth the planning commission has to deal with a whole series of amendments, I mean, I think they can, you know, we, a planner can rank out a lot of zoning amendments here, the question is, can, can we digest it and get through them quick enough?
I, I think we can, if we have, um, like what you've done for us, you've had your suggestions, and then we've discussed those and we've moved through, I think we moved two hundred and seventeen or two hundred and seventy there in one night, so I think we can, I think it's how it's presented.
We can get that number up, we can get through these things quicker.
Yeah.
You mean, for the professional services, a dollar amount, what would you recommend?
You can go sixty.
We can obviously ask.
You said sixty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Sixty thousand, and that is number eight oh four.
Eight oh four, professional services.
Okay. Okay, dues and next, are we done? Dues, dues and members, oh, I'm sorry, go on.
To seven oh two through.
Yes, you betcha.
So you're estimating twenty-two meetings and, uh, Denise was saying it's a thousand dollars per meeting?
Approximately.
Approximately.
So is the twenty-one six gonna be enough?
What, what, where do we come up with twenty-two meetings?
Well, what I, I, what I had was, uh, well, I had sixteen meetings.
Okay, down here in the notes, oh, so this is, this is from last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, this is when they, back in twenty.
I'm sorry, I'm very confused.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I went up and changed it to this one, so we can work with.
Yeah, what we had was twelve regular, two special is what we're, was thinking of, and then two joint meetings with the township board, which we come up with over sixteen, yeah. And there may be, there may be a need for more, you know.
Right, well, the, the twenty-one six is well above your sixteen.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah.
And that would be on, uh, seven oh two is the twenty-one six?
Uh, seven oh two through seven sixteen.
Yes, okay. But they're gonna, I, I hope they don't want to break it down, but.
Okay.
Well, if you add, if you add up the requested, it comes up to the twenty-one six.
Okay.
Okay, dues and memberships, number eight oh four, seven twenty-five. Um, requested last, is that, do we want to leave that? Uh, Randy, I had a question for you, are, we're all members of the M T A?
Yes.
And we, that's an annual membership, I believe, are, is that enough to cover that?
I don't know, I guess what.
It's a group membership for the whole township.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
But Randy was more interested in the A P A dues and membership and.
Yes.
And so.
Well, I, I think there was a question about group membership versus individual memberships last.
Yeah, I, I looked that up and it's, and, um, I wrote it down somewhere, but I believe it's like a hundred and twenty, uh, somewhere in a hundred and twenty, around a hundred and twenty-one dollars as the base fee, and then another sixty-eight per member, so that would, you know, seven of us, um, you know, and plus a hundred and twenty, twenty, I'll say a hundred and twenty-five, I could look up on their website real quick, because I did at some point in time write it down, but, you know, how that goes. So anyway, um, that, I thought you, you, you recommended that we be- become part of.
I do, in fact, I handed on, it just came in the mail to me personally, there's this training and there's less cost, if you remember.
Yeah, it's right, it's right here then, the group.
Well, this is for the actual. Planning is only essential, site plan review, community engagement, like.
Oh, it says join M A P now for seventy-five dollars.
M A P, Michigan's, um, a plant, thank, receive the member discount. I, I think if you, uh, you can get a group rate, that's a little bit less than that, but it's.
I think last time we looked at the group rate, we, unless you had town board members included, we didn't have, it was cheaper to do it individually.
Yes, I remember.
I think so.
But when I looked it up on, uh, their website, it was a base rate, and then you could add as many members as you wanted. There wasn't any limitation, I don't know if the board members want to be on, but for this commission, if we all wanted to be on it, it would, you know, we should go ahead and decide and put that dollar amount in there for that.
We should.
Okay, so, um.
So do we know what the seven fifty, seven twenty-five is for?
I think it's for like, um, citizen planner and, uh, for things like that, I believe that.
Education.
The dues and membership, I think that is, is for our M T A, isn't it?
No, I think that's, that was put in there for A P A, but then we never really got around to getting members lined up for it. We should have, but.
So, just real.
But do you think we should leave it at the seven, seven, uh, seven twenty-five, or should we add to it?
Um, I, well, if, if that's the only membership, I would round up to seven fifty, and that should.
Should cover.
Cover seven members, and, and there's anybody who doesn't want to get it because they won't read it, or, I mean.
You don't have to include me in that, because I'm already part of that.
Okay, so, we can leave it at seven fifty, or, or if you want to up it in case somebody leaves and someone new comes in, then we have to pay for their.
I think we have that, because if, I get it, we'll have an extra one.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but you have to name the person, because I think they have to, they get an online.
My point is, we're not naming him.
Yeah.
Because he's already named.
Yes.
Through the township, right? No, no, to my own.
Yeah, oh, I see what you're saying, just, just for budgeting purposes, if we, do you want to just put like, I, I'm always like, you know, hedge in your eight hundred, and that will cover it, and then, because we'll have a new member, and, and maybe.
Maybe you have two members before we're.
Yeah.
Yeah, you never know.
Yeah.
Sometimes faces change quickly.
Yeah, so you don't want to have to go back for like a hundred dollars.
Well, we got a lot of, a lot of room that we can move it from one to another, but we could, if you want it eight hundred, we could, we all go to that.
I've been getting that, you know, uh, call magazine that for months, for years, and it seemed to me that when I signed up, maybe for the, uh, the citizen planner or something, when I signed up, and I said I was a township official, I got signed up free, I think it was, and I didn't have to pay to be an M P E member, since it was a township official. And, uh, they had paid for the, uh, the class, uh, and there was a discount if you signed up before a certain date, as I recall. Pay any membership.
So Deb, is that, are you included in with, with your own budget? Yeah, but, but what about an A P A membership?
I don't have.
You have a separate budget that you work through with the town?
I have not seen my budget.
Okay, do we wanna, do we wanna change that?
Agree with Denise, let's put a hundred on it.
Denise, you good with eight hundred?
Little play.
Yeah, I, I'm, yes, I am, I'm just trying to look at the, the membership, but I would say eight hundred would cover.
Okay, yeah, we're not, and, okay, number eight forty-seven, I, uh, software. Um, but what I was thinking is that was one sixty, and I added, brought it up to five hundred because of this Windows eleven can be problematic with, with stuff, I, like with my emails, what it does, I can go on my email, get on, on, on township computer, it'll stay on it when you shut it off. It'll stay on it when you shut it off and then you have to try to reload it again because it goes. And I've had Windows eleven where I've been typing on, you know, making documents in there. And it doesn't even, didn't give you a warning. It just battery was full to plug in.
Yeah.
It just stopped, won't play. When I turned it back on, everything that I'd worked on is gone. So I think we may have to.
Is that something the township board would handle or would we have to handle?
Well, I think when I worked on it last time, um I give it to supervisor and I think they had uh. Don't know. I don't know if we pay for that or what that works, but it's in the software.
Any issues with the software on our laptops uh for this uh software support? Do we pay for it out of our budget or does it come out of the?
I believe it's out of the township's general.
General budget.
That's kind of what I the impression I got.
Okay, so we really don't even need that topic, do we?
Well, I think that might have to do with. I understood I've never seen it, but the township has the G I S software here and I'm not sure if they've ever used it. But there might be some money attached to that. I honestly don't know.
Okay.
I don't know what other software support we would need.
So you wanna put it just.
We could just leave it at the one sixty, leave it at the one sixty then.
We we never touched it last time.
Yeah. Pardon?
Have you updated?
Mine mine came with Windows eleven.
Oh, I I got a notice that I should update, so I will. I didn't, but I will.
All right, then that's fine.
Okay, would do we agree to leave that uh one sixty?
I think so. It sounds like most of our.
Okay, mileage, we had number eight sixty, we had two fifty. Um we don't know what we have going on. Is that there with them? What's that even for? I think if we were go out of town somewhere to like when Mike went to um. Gaylord, he could have charged mileage.
Yeah.
And so I think that's covered there if you if you choose to.
Okay.
So. Leave that in there.
Doesn't look like we've actually used any of it.
No.
Leave it there.
Yeah.
Meals and lodging, zero. I don't see any of us staying out of town.
No, they, when was this, this thing here? Listen, classes that are out of town. And if we wanted to go to them, we might have to stay overnight and there's mileage.
Okay.
Uh, I I've had mileage and a couple of conferences I went to, but I don't know, yeah.
Well.
We should put it in there.
Earl's got a good point.
Yeah, you got Frankenmuth, you've got uh.
I've got a, I got a question.
East Lansing, Kalamazoo. I don't know any of those. I see some virtual ones here. I'm not personally interested in going out of town to any, but you never know.
I'd kind of like to see us get some focused training on um, you know, changing. Changing our 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 laws. Where the uh zoning ordinances, and if we could have some specialized training here for that, not have it at a meeting.
Yeah.
Because we never have time for it.
No.
Pick maybe two times a year that we'll have specialized training here on a separate day from our meetings.
It's a great idea.
And pay for that person.
And pay for that person.
Okay, and then they probably have a a stipend that we would pay for their.
That's a good idea to have a specific meeting to this topic.
We'll see what that causes. Is it okay? It causes um the cost of the training. But then yet will also cause the cost of us being. So.
So it would be an extra meeting.
So we can we add two special meetings or training.
Sure.
Would that go under education and training or would you put that under salary and wages?
Probably salary and wages.
List them as special training.
I would think that'd be educated.
Why wouldn't you put it under education and training?
Well, only because they have um salaries change, they have it broke down into four categories.
Well, maybe you put some of it under salary and then some of it under professional services.
I I think that's something we'd just have to ask what maybe the clerk or the. Uh the treasurer's preference on that would be, but. And then she could, wherever she wanted to put it. Right.
Because because our twenty one six allows for us to have a couple of extra meetings in, you know what I mean? From what we're, from what the idea is going on here. I mean, if you're talking sixteen meetings, you're talking a lot closer to sixteen thousand. There's five extra, close to five extra meetings.
Okay, so you say we don't have to plan for the extra meetings and just plan for the training costs.
Right, yeah.
And then just put in that twenty one six, that two of those would be.
Two training.
So twenty one six is what that you're referring to.
Right.
Could you repeat that? So um you would put the.
So it sounds like we already have the money in our salaries for two extra training.
Two additional.
Two if additional uh special meetings.
No, special meetings, just.
But, okay, and so if we have it, if we have that, and then how many? We have twelve for the. Regular monthly meeting and then you said two for additional meetings for covering. Whatever that we need and then two more.
And two special meetings. And twelve regular, yeah.
And and two training and two training.
So you're up to eighteen.
Up to eighteen, so that's a thousand.
Still at twenty one.
We're still at twenty.
Six, so we're still well under our twenty one six.
Okay.
And and that still allows a little bit of room for a couple of other special meetings that is very possible could have.
Right.
Right, like would an open house or what we're doing one of our public things, does that help?
I didn't get paid for any of them last time.
That seems wrong.
It's evening, you're.
Yeah, had to give up your own time.
I think though on something like that, you can you can uh apply to the clerk. All you have to do is is. Just make a time sheet to the clerk and and you know, if you're working on conducting meetings, you can certainly certainly let the clerk know and there's a time sheet for that, so.
It's still really in in the twenty one six does give us extra money to even take care of that if we have it, I think, so.
Under salaries, if you would put like the um. What what did you say? Say eighteen meetings, eighteen thousand?
I would just, I would just mark that like you had said with sixteen, regular.
Yes, uh. Twelve regular, two special, two joint, and then now we'd have two training.
Two training.
Two training.
So that would be, so I would put under just seven oh two salaries, I would put eighteen thousand and then um. Cause I in, I don't know how to add uh the, I I would, I don't know how to calculate social security and Medicare right off the.
We can just leave it like.
Let them do that. Yeah, so that twenty one.
You're just saying twenty one six total.
From seven oh two to seven sixteen.
Yeah, and they'll they'll figure that.
Yeah, I.
See how he's got this parentheses here?
Yeah, I just don't know if uh the the taxes.
Well, we don't know. That's this is an estimate. We don't have.
That's where they.
That's where he got the.
Where you get your twenty one six.
Yeah, but we're at, so it'd be a little bit more because you're adding two thousand and then you'd have a little bit more in those categories. That's all I'm saying.
Oh.
Yeah, um but anyway, you know, i- if you. If you put it at eighteen for the salaries, then maybe they'll, you know, they'll be able to work out the additional costs for wages.
And I think we just leave the the twenty one six and they'll figure it out. That's what we're asking for, right? Twenty one, twenty one six.
Yeah, for salaries.
That's a little over a thousand a meeting.
Yeah, but that's. That that's just, yeah, okay. That's social security, they only pay half and so we, you know, we have to. That goes, comes out of the other half of the township. I I just, I mean, I'll go twenty one six. I'm just. Don't know if it's gonna be.
Okay.
Kind of questionable. All right.
Next one was education and training.
Yeah, I would like to see us, I don't know, Randy, what what do you think it would cost to bring somebody in to do a couple of our training on?
Well, one thought is that you can do um. Some joint training with other local governments around you.
Yeah.
Like East Bay or Acme or or whatever. Let me do, do we need to have a final number here?
I don't think, I don't think we do. Keep, we do it.
When does that have to be turned in?
Um, we could turn it in in Feb, the next, we we're we're covered here that, I mean, we could turn it in. We're not ready for it.
I can find out what APA is because.
We just approve this next on in our, put it on in February.
I just really would like to see us get some s- specific training on. You know, these words.
Because if if you look, they say the onsite workshops, maps workshops. And and full disclosure, I've actually done these before, so I I know what they do. They actually have a canned program. That a planner just distributes and provides, so you know, we could probably do this with Acme or. East Bay or Clearwater, whoever, you know, and and split the cost with them and it would, the cost go down.
Yeah, thank.
So. Me just. I know I know what the instructor gets paid and used to get paid. Um, I don't know what.
We have two thousand in there now, Randy. Would you think if we if we bump that up to an estimated two 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 trainings with that? Trainer, would you like to?
I think so.
Um you would be splitting it, so if we put, if you wanted to, you could change that to a six. And what that would do, that would, that would give you six thousand. I don't, let's say whatever you charge, you probably bring a couple of people with him too for training. So I don't, what do you think I would charge?
I yeah, I don't know. I I guess I don't, I I wanna call him and ask him.
Okay, okay. Question mark on education and training.
So eight. And I have to do citizen planner, I think, right?
Yeah, and I do as well, and that's.
Five hundred. It's two fifty a person.
Yeah. So does anybody else wanna do citizen? I know you have.
I've done it already.
You have, okay, so two of us.
But you, and then you're gonna have somebody who replaces me is gonna have to do it.
So seven.
And how much is that each?
Two fifty, so seven fifty for three people.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, we might wanna bump that up.
Yeah, you're gonna have to with all the, with all the new stuff.
Where is that at now?
Well, that would be under education and training.
Oh, education, training, make that uh.
Well, well, let's put it at ten, it'll be at three thousand.
Okay, three thousand, okay.
And if um if you go through any of these um. Conferences, like I went to Agritourism, it was um seventy five or a hundred, a hundred and twenty five. Uh you you wanna add some in for that because, you know, if you wanna go to Frankenmuth and do this. Session for a hundred and thirty five, you know. What do you wanna, do you do you want each person to have some opportunity to go to a conference?
Uh I think we just, right now we should just wait for Randy to say how much it's gonna, he thinks it will cost us.
Bring the conference to us if we have enough people.
I mean, we know what, I mean, this tells you a cost right now for.
Right.
For these, but if we wanna do some onsite ones, we could probably get more done. Uh and around our schedule too, as opposed to getting one date that they have.
And and then the meal, the the meals and lodging, would it, do we have to add that in to uh fill that out for a speaker? Or is that?
Expenses. One turd.
Okay.
Okay, nine oh one publishing, three thousand. Um, we're going to probably have with what we have working on um. Where there's zoning ordinance, we may have some flyers to mail out. The the three thousand, is that? Did, I don't know what it costs to do a mail out for the township.
About seven fifty.
About seven fifty?
Yeah, and that was the survey, oh, that was before the increase, so maybe.
You know what, though, then that, that sounds like that would cover it.
We're talking about publishing.
Yeah, publishing is different.
It's just publishing.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
That would be like publishing the paper.
Yes.
Legal ads, which. They're a couple hundred dollars, I think, every time we do.
Well, we only spent two sixty eight last time, last year, the whole year.
Well, that must have been one.
I can't believe that's even.
Well, I don't know, maybe.
Printing our surveys.
Three hundred was the amended budget, um it looks like.
I bet what they did is is uh the township just had that, just put that in their budget, publishing. I don't know what top, what what line item they put it under either our surveys and stuff. They might have put it under.
The surveys, when they reprinted.
Or do you remember Denise?
I think it was twenty twenty three.
Your dad is starting. But the pr- the printing might have been the sign each that we had, you know, we put our signs around the neighborhoods and we had, I don't know how much those were. But um I know we did that and um. Edu- I wanted to go back to education and training because we didn't include uh new books uh for the, for new members. They should probably have. So are they going to? Whoever's taking my seat will get twenty four. Yeah, but I I know if if we have to pay for them. There's three and I, and Carl, I know you've read, you have both of these too. Twenty, do you think that all three are needed?
Um. Uh, those two are needed, uh that second, the second. The whoever's a Z B A. A member uh needs both of those. That other one, I don't know that anybody needs that. I have it.
The red one?
Yeah.
I like to have this and and it's.
It's got a lot more information in it, certainly.
Yeah, and we do.
We do.
I think we all have all three already.
Um, so we have one new person. I don't know, it technically it should come out of our budget and these three are about a hundred and fifty total. On estimate, so we have one new member.
Yeah, we'd have three thousand and they're covered.
When I'm done, my books will come back and somebody will just.
Do you have your share?
I need this one, I think.
Yeah, see, I I have this one. I don't think I have this one. I know.
The the big one is the one everybody needs, it's.
This one.
That in that one is ninety percent of what you need to know. Maybe if you if you take the citizen planner, that gives you certification. That. I think that's just as good or better. Other planner gives you some cases to go and it's, but boy, that is.
This one.
That's my bible and the thin one there for the Z B A members. We haven't gotten into a real detailed one yet, but there's gonna come a time when that book's gonna be handy.
Or the Z, the smaller one for the Z B A, this one.
Yeah, because yeah, that little one, because they could be lawsuits and.
Yeah.
There's just uh, as somebody said, oh, oh. Deb said, there's gonna be some things come up where we're gonna need to hire an expert, maybe depending on what the issues are. Because there's some super technical things that could be in there that. You know, requires. You know, an expert, you know, they're gonna have an expert and maybe we need an expert, I.
So how many people need books of of these right here? Cause if you don't have them.
I think what we should do is for next meeting, discuss the training and we'll get some answers from, um you know. Where where's this money coming from for the books and all that? Right, and then we'll know, and then if we do, then we'll go ahead and add that into it.
Okay.
Cause there's so many questions to this.
Okay.
I'll be able to answer tonight.
Nine oh one publishing, three thousand.
So just just leaving that as it is.
Yeah, I suggest just leave right where it is. You can always move it around if we don't use it.
Probably the same thing with printing.
Nine oh two printing, three thousand, I'd leave that as well.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, well then we agree to uh to, we're going to go, we're gonna finalize this in our February meeting. Go over it, get some questions answered that we wanted to get answered and um. So do, so do we we agree to um table this till February?
Yeah.
For February meeting.
Yeah.
I'll have a uh typed up budget.
Okay.
For our next meeting.
And I made some notes on there, you can.
And then I'll, yeah, I'll break it down. I'll break down the education and training, devil's kind of line item for us. So that we can make sure we get everything in there we need.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, our next item was uh our annual report. Um, and we, I have that, we all have that as a, as a handout. And the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, one twenty five dash thirty eight nineteen two. Planning, planning commission shall make an annual report written to the legislative body. Concerning its operations and the status of planning activities, including recommendations regarding actions. By the legislative body related to planning and development. So that's uh Legislative Act. And if you look, we could, we could. Quickly go through this and see if. You're in agreement or there's something you want changed. The 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 top uh reference was um. Where we're where we're compelled to. Uh, prepare an annual annual report. Uh, the next line down was the purpose of the annual annual report. And then the membership, and I have Mike here as uh. As uh twelve thirty-one twenty-four, would you, would everybody mind looking at your dates there? I checked with um. When or uh with Linda, and I think I believe these dates are right, the expiration dates. Uh, mine is um. I believe, so I think those are right, does those all look? Okay, okay, we'll do that. And the the next line, page two. Uh, planning commission, the planning commission was tasked with the complete overhaul of the Whitewater Township zoning map. Which included but not limited to. Oh, go ahead, excuse.
I'd like to go back.
Yeah, sure, but.
I just went through here real quick, I didn't notice it, and if I did, I missed it, let me know, but. I think it, we should note in here, everybody that served on the board.
Okay.
This past year.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
You know, at least uh, you know.
Um.
Have them as, uh, you know, you could have just a separate paragraph saying. These were past members of the board this year.
Year.
And then, you know.
Membership, yeah. Um. Yeah, we could, we could do that, who do we have? We have Heidi, right?
Yeah.
We have Heidi, give me a. Linda, Linda. Um.
Rachel.
Rachel was on.
Rachel, yeah, she had twenty-four.
Wasn't she on till like April?
No, she wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah, she was into March. Well, it's written probably on the the notes of this.
Yeah, because it was near the end of the school year.
Was that this year?
She was, well, it was last. Her daughter won the. Part of Miss O Crappids, and that one turned last year, and then she quit after that.
They didn't leave till Labor Day.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah, so we'd have.
We, yeah, Rachel.
So what would you want to put there? Did you want to put, just mention or?
Yeah, I just put another paragraph here, um, well, we have your membership, maybe after, under the membership, you could say. Um. During, sir, during this year, but I no longer serve.
Okay, I sure will, sir.
Hate to keep adding, but I'd love to see something in there about um. You know, who served on the um. ROS.
ROS.
We have that on in the master plan.
Mm-hmm.
We have that, they're listed in the master plan. But if you want to, we could, we could.
I mean, this is to the the township board of trustees, and I just think it's. Who served on?
Yeah, that was very important. There was president, there was outreach. And you know, I like, now, what did Rod be bad? That was, that wasn't this year, was it?
No.
That was last year, or a year before.
The year before, twenty-three.
Outreach committees, only you, okay?
Resident outreach committee.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, okay, page two. Planning commission, the planning commission was tasked with complete overhaul of the Whitewater Township zoning map, which included but not limited to. Outreach to the Michigan, to a Michigan licensed professional surveyor verifying boundaries. And reviewing amendments. North Place Planning advising and coordinating efforts. And Grand Traverse County GIS all working together in conjunction, making the necessary corrections. To the Whitewater Township zoning map. White, and next paragraph, uh, Whitewater Township master plan required updating as well. In order to gain a clear understanding of the township's vision, two workshops were held at Mill Creek School. Subcommittee's input, North Place Planning and coordinating efforts. Uh, community surveys where six hundred and twenty surveys were returned. And dialogue with our residents during the PC scheduled, PC scheduled meetings, all of which were vital in decision-making. This collaborative collaborative effort allowed the planning commission to build. Uh, a document that is forward-looking, describing. Um, describe that, describe, no, let me see that, forward look, describing the desired directions of the community. Pending uh, public hearing and board approval, the master plan is complete. Would that be true, Randy? That, okay. This past year has seen multiple special use. Land use, the site plan reviews and multiple zoning zoning ordinance clarification. Issues reviewed with projects brought to fruition. The Whitewater Township Board selected a civil engineering firm, Gordy Frazier. To administer, to assist the planning commission in evaluation, offering technical opinions when required. Meetings, the planning commission held twelve regular scheduled meetings, held two special meetings. Held two conferences at the town hall with the zoning, zoning administrator, developer, planner, and two PC members. Training, planning, uh, PC training, the majority of the PCs packets include additional. Uh, edu- additional education materials with a handout trained with with handout training material. The PC has invited guest speakers offering training in their specific areas of expertise. Randy Melnick of North Place uh Planning. Provided multiple resources via a PowerPoint presentation. To help the, to help educate the planning commission in our meetings throughout the year. The planning commission have been provided three, three lar- large three-ring binders with a zoning amendments and ordinance. Some planning commission, some planning, some PC members have attended the zoning board of appeals. Meetings as another training tool for better understanding, uh, better understanding the obligations concerning the appeals process. I went to uh. One of Carl's meetings, and I was, that was, that was very informative, how they, how they operated, they, how the meeting was run. I mean, he did a fantastic job. Uh. Forward-looking.
Yeah.
Oh. That was what it was then, but that is a good point.
No, because that's.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could change that if we wanted to, or just leave it as Mill Creek Schools at the time, so.
Yeah.
We're good with it. If. If, uh, let me see, forward-looking. Uh, Vice Chair Al Keaton contacted a well-established Grand Traverse County developer, James Smuckle. Owner of James A. Smuckle Real Estate, asking if he would be willing to attend a. A planning commission meeting as a guest speaker, answering questions and offering uh. Offering opinions concerning planning and developments. Mr. Smuckle has agreed. Mr. Smuckle is a native, native of the area with thirty-nine years' experience of commercial and residential development. The plan is to vote an hour plus during a regular scheduled meeting or ask the membership for a special meeting. The audience would would have an opportunity to ask questions as well, the goal. Gather knowledge concerning assisting the PC in their task of maintaining our rural character. While reviewing ordinances and managing development. Zoning, uh, land use permits, uh, eighty-five, site plan, special and site plan review use four. Zoning Board of Appeals, three, land division and combos fifteen. And the supporting documentation is attached, uh, uh, that's the. Um, zoning twenty twenty-four annual report. Zoning Board of Appeals, and I mentioned your name here, Carl, and I hope it's okay. Zoning Board of Appeals meets wh- when necessary, Carl Warble is a planning commission representative and reports findings as needed. While while most are familiar with the typical divisional variances involving setbacks, constraints. They they are charged with with many, with many more responsibilities. More often this past year, the zoning board of appeals was asked to address issues involving non-conforming situations. The appeals process is is a necessity, offering property owners the ability to ha- to have a hardship heard. Due to no fault of their own, and an avenue, and an avenue to mitigate a seemingly unfair circumstance. Concerning property or property rights.
Um, why is, why is that included in our um? Annual.
What's that?
The zoning board of appeals.
That's that, it was put in there, uh. Well, we're. You know, Carl's with us on, it was, that they had it in Rachel's in the last one in twenty twenty-three, so. Put it in here.
Didn't use any of the verbiage to my report, I put a two-page report, plus I lost everything, but you didn't include any of my verbiage in your. Annual report, I mean, I submitted it to the township board as well.
I, yeah, I know that, yeah. What did you want me to put in?
Yeah.
I mean, I listed what what you was, and I list, and I attach, attach the whole thing. Attach the whole thing, it's in there, it's in there, so, I mean.
I just looked bare on.
Oh, yeah, I.
It just looked bare.
That's your opinion. Hmm. Okay, so. So what I guess we need to do is look that over, are we all? Randy, do you have any comments?
Oh, just noticed my name was spelled wrong a couple places.
Yes, I, but no, I didn't. It was.
Yeah.
That's, I thought I cleaned that up, okay.
Um.
Spelling.
Well, I mean, this this captures the essence of brother. This captures the essence of what we're supposed to do, which is formally report. For the town board, what what the planning commission has been up to, I mean, they, they have access to your minutes, but.
Yes.
But.
Well, well, the uh, the legislature also, you know, they tell us. For that, what to do.
Required.
So I.
It's required.
Yeah, or, so are we happy with it? I gotta add the. Um, add Linda, Rachel, and Heidi, yeah, let me see here, and served, served.
Served and. Uh, first former members?
Former members.
Perfect, perfect. And the former members of the PC and then former members of the ROS.
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 Yeah, it's, do you want?
Twenty twenty-four.
In twenty twenty-four, so we would have to go through all the the meetings, minutes and pick up the names, it'd be the easiest on the agendas. Of, or whatever, but uh, un- under zoning, I would put, you put supporting documentation attached, I would put. Something more definitive like the, the um. Zoning Administrator Deb Graver, uh, uh, report is attached. Okay, zoning administrator. Oh, okay.
Well, it's in the zoning, it's in the zoning category.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
I just don't know if uh, it's conveyed that there's a large uptick in development activity.
Why did a nice little chart on the front of my page?
But is it um? Is it really highlighting the increases that you you've seen? I mean, I was surprised by the statement you made at the beginning of the meeting that. There's so much more permit activity than we've had in the past and.
Accessory structures, it's new builds, it's, it's that type of activity, it's not like people.
But I mean, it's. It's time and effort to process his own application, and it's, and it's.
Yeah.
I mean.
Last five years.
Uh, it does say land use permits are up significantly, so you have the chart there that shows. I mean, eighty-five land use permits is almost double last year.
Yeah, so this would be the whole report with with the attachment.
Correct.
Okay.
I think the other element of that is that you are following up with other. With reviewing after you issue the zoning permit, going out and requiring the staking beforehand and. Things that seem. It is, but I don't know that it was done properly before.
Yes, Kenny, Bob was a hero here, so, who knows what matters? I'm just, there's a huge volume going on right now.
Yeah.
So.
Well. At this point, you willing to make a motion with the additions of past members of both. The uh, PC and ROS. To accept this as written.
Is this all part of the spelling correction?
With spelling. Uh, I I was gonna say, under planning commission, you you put subcommittees input, did you want to put ROS? Uh. Resident outreach.
I'd mentioned that.
Oh, yeah, I did.
And in this, in the.
In the print, in the print, and that, that's written, okay.
Okay. Let me see that, Denise, that was page two.
Yeah, page two.
Let me see.
Line seven.
First spell it out, because nobody else is gonna know what ROS stands for.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go, okay.
I'm. I'm wondering under forward-looking, if we should be referring to the, you know, the increase in land use permits, because um. Doesn't that directly affect like how, like how busy we're gonna be in, um, yes.
Yeah, it'll justify our, it'll justify our budget. In requests, that that's part of that.
What was that?
Under forward-looking, you add what you, what you're going to be doing to justify uh, your budget, um, so. Uh.
Using Deb's, you know, table, even. Inserting that in here to show the the increase.
Yeah, it's it's attached.
No, I know it's attached, but I, but I think people have a tendency to um, ignore attachments, so. I'm just, I'm just saying that that under forward-looking, addition to to, you know, the the developer coming in to talk to us, that. Um, referring.
Yeah.
Right, referring to the increase in, you know, activity that. That it's gonna require.
Additional meetings.
Right.
Might actually support your additional budget items.
Right, yeah.
And it might reinforce why you need additional training and why you need additional expert help or planners or uh, civil engineers to help.
What does this actually do?
It's.
It's the first of the year, so we can go ahead, make this and get it to you. You know, we could look at it next, look at it next meeting, if it's good.
Okay.
Give it to Wendy, and.
So I'll withdraw my motion. Turn that down a bit. We'll look this over again, I, I, I do agree, I think. Under, since you have forward-looking, we should be looking at. The last work we're gonna see with the new, you know, new bills and stuff. Um.
Possible ROSs and.
Yeah, maybe um. Only we're looking about mentioning something about the um, the ordinances.
And inviting.
Look at all the, you know, already what Randy's got up there, you know? Yeah.
Personal activity is picking up. I mean, this gentleman's gonna be in the Cayman earlier, he's gonna be coming back for a hearing next month, I guarantee it. You have two hearings coming up in February. You've got the gentleman who's wanting to develop the property over here for competitor with GFL. He's hoping that after the middle of February, he's gonna be back in here, so first of March, you're gonna have him in here for a hearing. To look at that, if he can get clearance from another, so Grand Traverse Classics is getting ready to expand. You have some stuff that is coming. Just be anticipating that, because that is your future.
So somehow, put that in there, Al.
Yeah. Yeah.
A large uptick in.
And in.
And activity.
But I agree, I think that's very important.
Yeah, and that'll justify the increases in our budget.
Yeah.
Because they're gonna want to know why we want that money.
Support why you need some additional training.
Yes.
Right.
And fine tuning our ordinances, so we have really good signage ordinances, and then we're not missing any uh. Holes in it that are gonna create lawsuits.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, one of the questions I had is, there are so many ordinances that we need to. Work on, there's stormwater, road, um, possibly. Work on. There's stormwater, road, um possibly STR. Is is there any way we could have like uh certain people focus, be the the like the point of contact or the head of maybe. Road ordinance and stormwater and sign those signs, changing the sign ordinance. I mean, those are. Three big things, but they um could be worked on by maybe two. PC members to get the research done and and bring it in and then. You know, present it to the PC so not all of us are doing roads and not all of the stuff, you know, so so we can divvy up our time a little bit and get some progress.
I think that's a great idea, but I want to say one more thing before we lost on the uh. Forward looking, would it make sense at all to attach this? And and mention it in the forward looking that's saying, hey, look, this is, you know, the goals, the vision that we have shown to us by the, you know, master plan. And this is what we're looking at dealing with.
Yeah.
We get attached to the annual report.
So I think I just mention it in the forward looking, please see, you know, this is these are the things in the that we've got to deal with.
Agenda, right?
Yeah.
I bet close to Denise's point about seeing how much time we're gonna be spending on all this. Okay, sorry. I'm sorry to say that before I forgot. But no, I agree with you on that. I think it'd be great. Everybody would kind of think about that.
Yeah, because it has ad hoc subcommittee.
We got an extra in the plan here, you know?
Pardon?
I didn't wanna get into something that wasn't on there.
No, you're no, go right ahead. That's. It that pertains to.
When we get into PC discussion.
Okay, annual report. Okay, Randy, we had, I think. Recovered most of that, haven't we?
I I just wanna bring up one um one point that was not mentioned with regard to the the zoning ordinance, as I mentioned. It's going before the public or to the town board next week. After our planning commission meeting last month. Denise pointed out that the requirements for uh cabins.
Public camp campground.
Yeah, yes, was in one part of the ordinance, but not in the other. It was it was in the family campground, not in the commercial one. It was before that, under the existing ordinance in one place in the the. Chapter with the chart, with all the lot sizes in it. It was removed from that because um. We're trying to keep it better organized and we were in the. The iterations of that table, um it it needed to be included in the commercial campground, so. The town board will likely make that change before approving um the new ordinance. They're aware of that. The township attorney is aware of it. It's not a major change in the sense that it required coming back to the planning commission. I just wanted to clarify that point. Thank you, Denise, for pointing that.
Yeah, that I'd like to comment on that. Because what what we did at the last meeting is overrode what we had done earlier, you know, approving. Uh, that glamping. Glamping was not even in mid uh around when the original. Uh, ordinance was approved. There was no such thing. Now we have limited. Uh, the individual's ability to promote this because now he can't build those bigger eggloos. You say, no, no, that can't be over uh six hundred and fifty feet because it has beds in it that. We didn't even notice when we approved that. We need to, we are supposed to support new businesses. Glamour camping is a new business that was not uh around when we did that ordinance. So we need to look at the ordinance. And see if that. Item should be dropped or changed or look at. I like to say this all the time. Look at any other communities that have approved glamour campgrounds. Because that is a whole different thing. I and I know you don't wanna have something where you say, well, they can have ten people. You know, you know, one structure. No, that's but but we're. You know, we agreed to let him have those when we did the first half, and now we told him he can't.
Yeah.
And I think that's wrong. We need to address it and do it one way. I'm not saying what we should approve. I'm saying we need to look at. As we do other ordinances today, when they were done thirty, forty years ago. So I was really upset with that. I really was. Because I think you guys, you know, I used up against. I don't know. I have I had did a little research, have a friend of mine do it downstate about glamour campgrounds because businesses. Will will go to them, you know, or, you know, their team building and things. And I guess it is a lot more popular. Than I ever thought it was. So, because I say, I don't know how this guy's gonna make make that work, but they say, hey. That is becoming a big thing and we need to look at our ordinance.
Yeah, but if we can change an ordinance, but we have to follow them until it's changed.
Oh, yeah. I mean, and we have to have a, you know, public meeting, but. As with that, but that's one where we're supposed to be supporting new businesses and here we're. Because of our ordinance, we're hindering them. And I don't, you know, there's. Gotta be a, yeah, considered. Yeah, I know. I I wasn't gonna mention that. Yeah, the CBA can give, and as I brought up another issue uh. From the CBA about this four to one ratio comes up all the time. Some lot is. Over that and it's always approved. And and no one has told me yet. Why we have, we don't follow the state. Law or say we that says if it's over ten acres, the forty-one ratio doesn't apply. Why do we say it does? Nobody's answered that question. You know, there you say, but why? And as as I said in one of the meetings, what difference does it make? The state doesn't think it should apply.
That would be a good one, Carl. When we take up the zoning ordinance is due specifically. And then discuss that, come up with a solution.
Yeah.
And then and then adopt whatever we.
Yeah.
I think that's a good way of, that's a good one to have. You know, if we had eight or ten of these or like we did last time. Uh, have them have them printed out and then make a comments and then bring the comments. Everybody. There's on the agenda, you bring it back in and you so you've had plenty of time to think about it. Have your comments ready and then we can discuss them. And we walked out with two hundred and seventy answers, so. We should do that again.
Yeah, if you're gonna change the ordinance, you got to.
Yes.
Come up, get the input, and then you have to have a public hearing.
Yep. But. Okay, next item on the uh next meeting's agenda items. Is there any specifics? Need to be added?
So you'll let me know?
Yeah, one from your.
What's that?
I am ninety-nine percent confident this gentleman wants his room starting to be utilized, so I uh I'm gonna call him tomorrow.
Well, just let me know, I guess.
Um, maybe formation of ad hoc committees or sub uh for the town for the planning commissioners to be. Like maybe two people trying to tackle uh one one topic so that we can get started on some of this.
Yeah, I can we discuss that just a second?
You betcha, you mentioned.
I was kind of thinking that um, you know, tackling all this. Um, next meeting, we would definitely start um. Figuring out what we're gonna start to tackle. Uh, hopefully get some um ideas from Randy and. Deb on what to start with, but. Does anybody, would anybody have a problem with um taking one of these on? Each one of us taking one of these on to start with?
Yes.
To get a.
Because I've been here quite a while. If we, we are responsible to the board. So in our meetings with the board, they need to approve. Because it is happened in the past, the planning commission spent a lot of time coming up with a revision or a new ordinance. And the board turned it down. So there is no point on working on anything without the board. Knowledge that we're doing it and approval that they're willing, when we're done with it, to consider it. Because. It's happened several times in the past, especially with the road. It's done three times and the board, so no. We don't decide our agenda, the board. We can recommend it. And the board should approve it or we're wasting our time.
I understand what you're saying, but I disagree with you.
I I disagree also.
Only because that's what our job is.
No.
Let me finish.
It's not.
Our our job is to take what we've been told to fix and try to fix it.
Yes.
Now, we'll go through it, we'll do our job, and we'll put that on to the board. If the board decides not to do anything with it, that's not our problem. We've done our job, we've brought it forward, we've done what we need to do and.
Yeah, and I've discussed this with another township supervisor. And he he said, well, aren't you working with the board? And we weren't.
And that's what this list is.
Yeah.
But we need to meet with the board and have them agree with it. They may tell us that. You know, there's other things they would prefer we do first.
That's the board right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, you you do have it. You do have a new board for one thing, and it's different than the old board.
That's, uh, yeah, I I I think we're gonna have a lot more luck, but they need to know what we're working on or what we want to work on that.
I think what's missing is a sense of priority among this oldest.
Exactly. I think that's exactly the the point I was making. I agree with the the point that we need the priority. And maybe the priority should come from the board because that's how it's supposed to work. The board first tells us what they would like to see fixed first.
Yes.
And and I mean, just as much as I'd like to pick up my own thing and say, this is what needs to be done first. It's not my place to pick it. It's the.
But at the same time, the board is relying on the planning commission of what what it needs.
Well, we have a whole list of stuff.
Well, no, but I'm just saying the board is not day to day thinking about the the master plan and the growth and development and increases. In zoning permits and where we're vulnerable and where we're not. They're they're relying on the planning commission to. Develop the master plan and then help us get the ordinances in place to deal with what we expect to happen.
And I think uh. With them reviewing this and saying these are priorities instead of us picking the priority. Would be helpful to us. And I think that's the point Carl's making.
Yeah.
But my my thought on that is, it's like, all they're gonna do is contact Deb. And Randy and say, which are the which are the ones we should start? And that's what we're gonna do.
We can ask Randy right now.
We can ask Randy right now. Deb's right here. They don't.
Yeah.
I cannot even enforce because it is so out of date.
Yeah.
And I have signs going up all along M seventy-two, and I don't have a policy that I can enforce.
And the best thing about this is we have Randy right here to be able to say, you know, maybe there's something else better you could you could focus on.
You know, the board approves the our uh zoning work. We don't. It doesn't, we don't put it into effect. They do. We we recommend. And uh, I I would suggest, I don't know how many of you have. Uh, attended or zoomed in on the board meetings because. And I've done that a lot to kind of see which way the wind was blowing and and on things and, you know, with. Found out, you know, things are a little more difficult than I thought they were, you know, the board. Yeah, I sometimes wonder why they're doing things. And then when I hear the, you know, hoops, they have to jump through to get anything done with other approvals. So, but, you know, we're not gonna tell the board what we're gonna do. They're gonna tell us.
And I think the the uh we have a couple of great aces in the hole with the board. I think the board does have a lot clearer idea. Of what we've been looking at and what what's important be because of Randy and because of Linda. We have two people on the board now that have sat in this room and had to deal with a lot of this stuff. So I don't think they're that much in the dark. I think they, I think there's a good. Uh, there's people, good people on that board that can help explain to the board why this or that is more important than other things on the list.
Because this board's gonna be, I think, much better and they're gonna be agreeing with us on almost everything, but. Being on, I I think Randy can tell me if I'm wrong here, but being on board, it's a board, I think the board would really appreciate. If we would narrow this down for them and say, look, this is where we feel. You know, our next meeting, this is where we our focus should be, and we're gonna move on for that. And then hand that to Randy. He takes it to the board, and if they have any issues with it, they can let us know.
Exactly, and I think that's what Carl's trying to say.
That's what I'd make. I'd rather be able to say, look at that and say, hey, I'm gonna stamp that and move on, but I don't wanna wait for it. I think the board would look for the planning commission's recommendation and justification for it and then agree or disagree with it.
Right. And I think that's Carl's trying to say, instead of just going off on our own, let's suggest to the board.
You know. Talked about a joint meeting as well. Maybe that's the time.
Do, could we give you like four or five things? Like Deb has a couple. Because it says you take action on petitions, staff proposals and township board request for. Um, amendments to the zoning ordinance if that's required. That's under section four PC duties of the PC. So. Deb's staff, she can give us a couple of recommendations. I mean, she probably get, you're on the ZBA, you could get.
That should be on, they'll be on the agenda for next.
You wanna do that now? Because he's going to the meeting next week, so.
Meeting next week, yeah.
Yeah, we if we give it to him now, he can ask him then.
We all prepared to sit down and decide which one of these we should do more than the others.
Oh, okay.
I don't think we're prepared for that.
You know, okay.
Well, we have to.
Go ahead, Carl.
We have to present the plan and have a meeting with the public on this plan. And get their input, uh, and that's gonna take, you know, tell us what are the most important items we ought to be doing. You know, we need to have inputs from the public.
We did that already.
Yeah. You know.
We have general priorities attached to.
And so, you know, definitely, you know, we can't do everything all at once.
Randy, can we get the sign ordinance added to this?
Uh, I think it's there under. It's under the legal um comments that the attorney brought up in the email. Um, it's the. It's it's specifically mentioned Reed versus Gilbert Supreme Court case, which was.
Oh, that's.
Which was about, yeah, which was about ten years ago.
Okay. So that's.
Yeah, that. That wasn't so much of a planning issue that surfaced during the master plan, but it did certainly come up with with other. Conversations and from the township attorney, our our sign ordinances.
It sounds like it's an issue.
Yeah. And yes, I mean, even if it's it's poorly written, but then it's was even worse after this Supreme Court case about ten years ago.
You said private roads was another.
Well, that's another issue too, that that we're very vulnerable on because we have nothing.
Right.
That is a general ordinance, right?
Stormwater ordinance, which is a general ordinance, but not a zoning.
I have, I've worked with, um, I have. Used quite a bit of work on on private roads and what other, what Grant Trevor's colony, what with their. With their process was and what they what they required. And that was a, that was a real good, they had a lot of good information in there, so.
No one's interested in a big overreach on the private road ordinance, but we're very vulnerable. There's a lot of people that potentially buy subdivision. Because there's nothing says how the road should need to be built. So for the um agenda next uh month, I'll put on there. We're on a list for this and to help move this along with the board. Maybe you could just mention to them that in our next meeting, we're gonna try to prioritize these. If they have any feedback they'd like to send us before we start talking about this.
Yeah.
And if not, we'll present them with.
Perfect.
Does that sound all right?
Yep, great.
I think the board is very welcome, you know, the we're collaborating relationship, not working on the same team as opposed to. Butting heads on stuff every time.
I I I look forward to that. That communication being a lot better.
Yeah.
I I think, I think now, especially we have two people on the other side who know what we've struggled with over here.
Is there anything else on the agenda that we wanna add then? Our next, we have two extra hearings, possibly two hearings. There's only work on um. I think you decided what we wanna do here. Budget.
And I reach um. Up update the annual report. For approval.
Yeah, we we go over the changes.
Okay, is there uh anything else? Okay, uh, open it up for public comment. Okay, uh, open it up for public comment in house.
Thank you so. I've been here since before eight o'clock this morning. I did run out at four to put my dog out, but then I came back. So, back room seventy-two down here behind Williamsburg Vet Clinic. If I go to the special use fee schedule, there's a special use permit amendment of fifty dollars. So if you have a vet clinic in the front, this is kind of like a.
Yeah.
Mullet, party in the back, okay? So we got the vet clinic in the front, you got a party room in the back, the party room, and I've been in it, has like a chair rail up to here that is metal corrugated and then wood. Up, it's got a little entryway that goes to a couple of bathrooms and their laundry room and then access to the front of the building. It has two exit doors and a closet over in the corner. That's basically all it is, is a room like this with two bathroom, a bathroom.
That's the veterinary.
The old send, the door that was converted to Williamsburg Clinic just beyond the Butterfly House.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, that's.
Over here.
When they brought that up and we approved the veterinary clinic, there was absolutely no mention of what you just said of having parties and things. That was not part of our.
I, I inherited this from Mr. Hall. Bob Hall gave him carte blanche to start doing this other stuff. Like I said, I went to Ron with this a couple of months ago when it came up to me. Ron said, we don't allow for mixed use in our ordinances. This is a commercial piece of property. I asked him to come in and present to you guys so that you can weigh in. I weighed in with Randy, he felt, hey, this is gonna, so, the one-page application I received, one page, not signed, no check, cause we don't know what the page is. Basically says event space for small event rentals such as wedding showers, kid birthday parties, baby showers, operating over the weekends and evenings called Back Room Seventy-Two. So there's probably gonna be a sign of some sort. It's gonna be a long M seventy-two, it's gonna be commercial. So the biggest things I see is what's the capacity? What is the parking lot? Cause there's limited parking on this particular site. If you've been there, ten to twelve parking spots is in my mind. There's some open fields. I don't know if they're gonna add more parking lot, but this is on a weekend. Um, so do you want this to be a site plan review? Do you want this to be a special use review? Or do you want this to be a special use permit amendment? Cause they do have minimal, I don't think you put any conditions on their vet clinic in regard to what you allowed for it and I haven't covered details, so you, you tell me.
I don't think I'd want it to be an amendment. I would think it'd want to be another process because.
Yeah.
What I think is.
You want a separate set of amendment?
Well.
Conditions for the back room versus the front room?
He come to us and wanted a vet clinic and, and that was good. It really, we really needed one. Now we want a party barn.
And a vet clinic.
And a vet clinic and we didn't, we didn't, there's no way when, I know when I, when I voted yes to approve it, there's no way I would have approved it if I had known there was gonna be a party barn in the back. No. So my, whatever, I don't think if we make an amendment, I think it'd have to be something new.
I think.
Okay, forty years of planning experience over here, Mr. Milnick, what do you think?
I, I disagree. I think it should be an amendment to have a special use on this permit, on this property, right?
It, it's in the same structural footprint. They're not adding any more square footage. It's not going up, it's not going out. This is everything they had when they did the original. I don't know if you guys went to the site and, and viewed it. But the main things I'm looking for, I mean, he's sitting here with a site plan. He didn't give me a copy of his site plan or anything, but capacity, parking, and then hours of what it's gonna be.
I'm thinking about it more.
Evenings and weekends.
Two site, two special use permits on one property.
I don't know, can you?
Confusing to me as to what special use requirements apply to what part of the property and things moving, so.
Well, it's almost, Matt, I'm looking at more like a mini mall where you have a nail salon on one side and you've got a, another business on the other.
Either way about whether the party garden is a good thing or not. I'm just saying mechanically, process wise, might better to deal with it as a amendment to an existing special use permit that's been granted for that property.
My, my question is, it maybe, does, if it starts out as a, a, I don't know, if you're calling it a party barn, but, um, it could change.
Backroom seventy-two.
Bathroom, if it goes for bathroom seventy-two and then he says, you know, I think I'll run another business in there. I mean, if we, what happens then? I mean, do we just say, well, he.
It's whatever the conditions you put on it, just like you can, you put the hours on, when can this be an operation?
Would you be able to do that?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. What? Exactly. And, and that's where you guys are not restricted by conditions. You're not. Now, are you, do the, am I?
Yeah, if you're, if it's just an amendment, then you would, you would handle it. We, it wouldn't even come before.
Oh, no.
No, it's gotta come to you. It has to come to you.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not approving this. This is, I have to pull it all together. I just need you to tell me, is it a fifty-dollar special use permit amendment? Is it a separate special use permit of a hundred dollars? Or is this a, a site plan review at two fifty or a site plan amendment? Or five hundred? Um, that's what I'm kind of looking for.
I think we, we, we jump in the gun a little bit first. First thing I want is an answer to Ron, Ron Pop's comment. Do we have an ordinance that says they can't have two separate entities going in the same building?
In the commercial district.
Well.
Was Ron right or was Ron wrong?
Where, where does it say that?
That's what I'm asking.
I don't think.
Ron, Ron said that, but is it true?
I don't even know it.
Well, I don't think it says that, but.
The commercial district is a mixed use allowed.
There's lots of uses that are permitted.
Yeah. Yeah.
But they'd have to permit it, I would think. I don't, I see what could happen, my view, if the, if the animal clinic isn't doing as well as they could, they could just turn the whole thing into North Seventy-Two or whatever the number was.
Not if we, not if we put conditions on.
Well, we could put conditions on the square feet.
Yeah.
This amount of.
That's where you, that's where you get into your skirt and there would be a fire door and firewall between the two units.
Put on it.
But they can't do.
It's a. The first thing I want to answer.
We do not have a, we do not have a mixed use ordinance.
But.
Like we have a commercial district. We don't have a mixed use district, like, like the village. Go ahead, Randy.
That's the wrong way of looking at it.
Oh, right. Randy, why don't you speak so that we can get one person here going at it?
Yeah.
Right, there you, you two. What, so they can do, yeah.
Okay, so I, so I don't know that there's anything in the zoning ordinance that says that each use has to be on its individual lot. We approved a, um, vet clinic down the road and that was approved with housing above it. Now, I don't know if they.
They're not doing it.
Originally.
No, originally, but.
Originally.
We approved it because they said they were gonna have apartments above there. That's mixing residential and commercial, and that, and there wasn't a problem. I, I don't think that the mixing the use is the issue. I think they, you know, the issue is just the mechanics of how we deal with this and is party barn a permitted use in that zoning district?
It's an event space and it is allowed.
Okay.
It's, it's allowed in commercial.
As a special use.
I'd have to pull the ordinance. I don't have, I don't have it in front of me.
Well, anyway, I, I, I think it should be an amendment. To that, that way, cause if you, if you have a, one property with several amendments, or I mean, several different separate special uses on it, it's gonna get confusing as to what special use applies to what.
Well, yeah.
And, and different approvals at different times. So it's, it's better to deal with one property, you know, one special use permit that you've amended as if, if it changes.
And you may be able to put other restrictions on the other half of the structure as well in case, cause we've learned a lot about putting conditions on properties, so.
Yeah, we have. I think the planning commission did a great job last time with.
I, I thought that was an excellent thing. I mean, I, I thought people really thought about it and I think Randy made a, an interesting comment to me a couple of weeks ago that there's a township nearby that when they have a hearing before their planning commission, they never make a decision that night. They always wait. Because if you think about it, having that month to think about silver birch and really crunch on the roads and the sizes, you got a chance to let it sink in, you're not reacting to the emotion of people standing up here and wanting, wanting, wanting. And you wanna please, 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 but you actually think it through and make sure we don't miss anything. You know, knowing that you're working on the master plan and how's this gonna impact everybody twenty years from now, thirty years from now, et cetera. So I, I thought that was really cool and so it would be lovely if we worked that in somewhere that just to kind of keep that in the back of your mind, that when you hear something, you don't have to make a decision that night. You can actually hear it and we're gonna deliberate this at the next meeting, move on to the next item, especially if you have one or two, three hearings in a, in a night. So just something to think about. Another question I have, so I'm gonna go with the special use permit amendment. I'll go back and pull the information on when this was originally done, which I think was twenty or twenty-one maybe. When they originally did the send redo and I think it took quite a while before they got it all rehashed.
Yeah.
Um.
Mike, do you remember? When we approved that, what, what we, I, I, it was, it seems like it was like in.
I thought it was twenty-two.
It was this pretty straightforward that the Alson Brothers was closing and they were gonna.
Well, and, and I'll try, I'll try to get quick here. I, I don't wanna get into tons and tons of discussion about this, ten twenty now. And, and I wanna go home sometime tonight and I'm really glad. My Wednesdays are my nowadays in the office. So Thursday's no more. I'll be here on Wednesdays because our treasurer and the, uh, deputy treasurer in the office on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons and gets too many people in that office back there. So Wednesday is my new day of being here in the office.
Okay.
Any help you need getting stuff done? I think I'm this close to getting access back to the website so I can actually post stuff up. Um, I apologize if I didn't get hearing notices or whatever delivered to you people, to everybody. I thought I was doing a really good job about getting stuff out to everyone, but after listening tonight, I feel like I failed miserably these last few months. So I'll just go home and try to do better. So, um, but I'm gonna put the, uh, R F R properties. I'll get with him tomorrow. He's gonna get back to me and, and we'll move on from there. But, but I like the idea of, of taking your time on not, and not having to make a decision. Something else to look at, if you go into the current revised chapter twenty-five zoning ordinance, there's a section in there that says when you do a disposition and put special conditions on an approved property, that they have to take that disposition and file it with the local county clerk and add it to their deed. Has anyone ever heard of that being done in this township before? Cause I have yet to find one document that that's ever been done on or ever come back to me on.
That was part of the recent update. That was an ordinance amendment that was done in.
Twenty-two, I think.
Yeah, it was not that long ago. So rather than change any of that, cause I agree with you. I think that's a strange requirement, but.
That may be something we look at or we need to start implementing that because I haven't made a re, a requirement, cause I was having, I was struggling because it's not transparent to the population that that's out there. So the sooner we get draft off our ordinances.
Basically, basically recorded at the courthouse.
They have to record it at the courthouse. So what we did with Silver Birch, they need to go record that at the courthouse and make it part of their deed. So that those deed restrictions run with the land. Same thing with any other special use. You put any restrictions or conditions on, or if you approve it with no conditions, that also needs to go and be applied with.
Should we put maybe some curvage at the bottom of their permit where they're aware they need to do this?
Well, that's, that's that disposition form that we have, but we haven't made it clear to the public because we have draft on everything and that particular ordinance has never been published on the website. So.
Something we need to clean up with that on our list.
Well, it's, no, it's, it's, it's in the new order.
It's in the new ordinance. So once the consolidated ordinance is there, all that information will be getting out to people. I haven't been enforcing it because it hasn't been clear to the public that it's, that it's out there. I mean, I didn't even know about it until like May. Nobody even told me about it when I started in April, except, oh, they probably didn't tell you about that yet.
There's a clerk that I, I talked with at, uh, Michigan Supreme Court and, and he'll answer some things once in a while with a disclaimer, but he said courts do not like documents with draft on them.
Oh.
And, and, uh, and I told him that a lot of our ordinance have that.
Since fifty, it's. It makes my job very difficult. I had a guy call me from Colorado today that just bought fifteen acres. He called me and said, well, I need to put a road in and I'm like, okay, where did, where's it at? I said, that's called a driveway here. Well, I live in Colorado and I'm like, don't say drive, don't, don't say road, this is a driveway. So, yeah, there's, there's a, there is a lot coming. And if you talk to people out and about, there is a lot coming this way. So, but I don't know if it'll ever get here. It's just moving this way.
Yeah.
Anyway.
We have somebody else.
Yeah, okay.
Update that for, give to the other P C members.
And I work. Yeah, good. Is, is there any comment? Well, should we wait for her to?
Just for.
Yeah, just wait for a second and then we should record. Okay, is there any comment on Zoom?
Connie, Hi-More?
Go ahead, Connie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, sure can.
This is Connie Hi-More, six, seven, six, one Bags Road. Um, I just wanna make a comment about Carl Robel's comment at nine fifty-six P M. He stated, and I'm gonna paraphrase this, so it's not a direct quote, quote. He said, nobody has yet to answer him concerning why the township doesn't follow state law concerning a parcel over ten acres. Okay, so we have talked about this a million times. So get your pencil ready, Carl. Because I'm gonna give you a M C L number for a state law that you can look up. Because this is where you're reading this ten acre thing from. And I'm also gonna tell you where the general ordinance is, why the ten acres does not apply to Whitewater Township. So the M C L number is five, six, zero, point, one, zero, nine, B as in boy, B as in boy. And that M C L number deals with the depth to width ratio. It mentions the ten acres. Yes, it does. But in ours state and, and it also says, there's a provision in there that says local laws can supersede state laws. So when you go to our general ordinances, general ordinance twenty-six, here's another thing to write down, general ordinance twenty-six, section seven, paragraph D states, and this is a quote, the ratio of depth to width of any parcel
Any.
created by the division does not exceed the four to one ratio, any parcel. Even, and, and that's an end quote, even our past zoning administrator, Bob Hall, in a recorded P C meeting, he states that local law supersedes state law and the ten acre does not apply in our township.
Connie, I agree with everything you just said. My question is why?
Please don't.
It's a difference.
Me, I don't wanna use to argue with me, Carl. I'm not, I don't. You can't. Please don't talk to me, Carl.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Hundred percent. I just wanna know why we did that. That's all. Is it a good thing? Maybe it is. I don't know.
You.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, anything over ten acres, that, that doesn't apply in Whitewater Township.
True.
Great, okay.
Spell her last name, please. H Y Y.
Thank you for your time. If you wanna spell my name, I'm sorry. It's H Y M O R E.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you to the P C. Happy New Year to all of you. I hope twenty twenty-five is productive and wonderful. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, another one?
Yes, um, says private citizen. I asked who they were, they didn't answer.
Okay, you're awesome.
Oh, I'm.
Go ahead.
It's me. It's me, Heidi, private citizen, eighty-three, eighty-eight Winning Lane, also known as eighty-three, seventy-one Winning Lane. I got three words, remember to be proactive and not reactive. And I'm going to applaud Connie Hi-More. She is not wrong. She's a hundred percent correct. I have the same homework. Don't cheat yourself. Michael, you should stick around. You're a valid asset. Nice meeting. We just, just gotta read your bylaws and get your agenda aligned with your bylaws and you guys will be cruising right along like we were. Don't give up, but remember, take your time and do your homework. And remember, if you don't have time to read your packet, admit it, catch up and react and have a nice meeting. Thank you, Connie, because the story was told correctly. And I have nothing else to say other than keep going, guys, but remember, and I've been to other plan commission meetings in different communities and told the P C the same thing.
Meetings in different communities and told the P C the same thing, don't always be so quick to react. And remember, you work for the greater good, you don't work for your opinions, you work for all of us. Have a nice meeting, you guys.
Hey, Heidi, could you spell your last name for the reporter, please?
V as in Victor, O L L, M like in Michael, U T H.
Did you guess that?
Pete, please.
I'm sorry?
Repeat that, please.
V as in Victor, O L L, M U T H.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Keith, good luck, if you need some help, let me know.
Thank you.
Have a nice night, guys, make sure you adjourn properly, there's information coming to all your emails to that, have a nice one, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Continuing Ed's, Ed, uh we're, I think we're good there. Uh. There are, are there any further comments from the members? None? Having completed our agenda without eject, without objection, I declare this meeting adjourned at ten thirty one. So. I wanna thank everybody too for staying over, it's always, just thank you so much, we get a lot done, but because everybody's willing to do it.